That's what I was looking at.
Are you guys ready?
Yep.
All right, stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, regular meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. Uh, I'll start with my script. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipating the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Dan Zwarko.
Here.
Beneath Hamavati.
Here.
Andrew Lamb.
Here.
Shelley Maynard-Dewell.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
Peggy Sheldon.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The greeting, the meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Okay, and now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Start with announcements. Eleven seventeen twenty twenty-five Select Board Regular Meeting announcements. Water and sewer bill update. Residents regularly receive their water and sewer bills, I'm sorry, recently received their water and sewer bills, which reflect the new rates that were announced, including in previous billing statements. We understand some residents are noticing an increase and have questions about their usage. For questions, please email publicworks@longmeadowma.gov. Please be sure to include the address of where the water and sewer usage occurred so that the DPW can run a historical usage report and verify accuracy of the meter readings. Thank you for your patience and understanding as we continue to maintain and invest in Long Meadows' water and sewer systems. Fall twenty twenty-five leaf program. Special Town of Long Meadow leaf bags are on sale at Long Meadow Big Wai. The leaf site on West Road is open through Sunday, December seventh, seven days a week, eight AM to five PM. Curbside collection of special leaf, Town Leaf Bags will occur on Saturday, November twenty-second and Saturday, December sixth. Please ensure that leafs, leaf, I'm sorry, please ensure that bags are to occur by seven AM on days of collection. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/leafprogram. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax classification hearing. On Monday, December first, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM, the Long Meadow Select Board will conduct the annual tax classification hearing in accordance with MGL Chapter forty, Section fifty-six to determine the percentage share of the tax levy to be borne by each class of property relative to setting the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rates. Or rate. The hearing will be held at two thirty-one Maple Road in the Greenwood Conference Room. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Long Meadow Community Electric, Electricity Enrollment. Letters were sent on November seventh, newly eligible and ever-source account holders in Long Meadow to notify them about the town's electricity program. Long Meadow Community Electricity. New account holders will soon be automatically enrolled in the group purchasing program that helps manage electricity costs and increase renewable energy use. The up-down deadline is December tenth, twenty twenty-five. For additional information on the program or to make changes to your enrollment, please visit longmeadowcommunityelectric.com. All right, now we move on to resident comment. Anybody would like to speak?
Tom Shea, eighty-one Green Meadow Drive. In our town meeting form of government, voters are the budgetary approval body. Select Board executes the voter mandates. At the May thirteenth Town Meeting, the town budget was approved and appropriated, as were the water and sewer enterprise budgets, with increases of eight point six and one point six percent respectively. Springfield increased its charges to Long Meadow by eight and a half and zero for fiscal twenty twenty-six. At the June sixteenth Select Board Meeting, you set the water and sewer rates based on increased water and sewer budgets by a combined two point one million, which was not approved by voters. They then voted to increase water and sewer rates by forty-four and forty-seven percent respectively and fixed charges by a hundred and fifty percent. Select Board has no statutory authority to increase the town or water and sewer enterprise fund budgets. You violated your own policies and Mass General Law forty-four, Section fifty-three F. Both require water and sewer rates to be based on an improved and appropriated budget as Long Meadow has done every year except the last two. Believe the rates you set are invalid and my conclusion is supported by two very experienced chief financial officers municipalities other than Long Meadow. You say what you have done is proper and you have a town council opinion. Release the opinion and make sure it references MGL Chapter forty-four and explains how you can set rates on a basis other than a town meeting approved budget. This is a municipal accounting and finance issue. Fairly certain Mass DOR will be reviewing the town's tax rate, enterprise funds, and rate-setting issues within the next thirty days. I believe you violated the Town Charter, Select Board Policies, and MGL. What you have done is taxation without representation. You had four water and sewer budget meetings last year and five this year, including one for a still unexplained five hundred thousand dollar shortfall. You violated your own financial policies nine times in the last year, including the debt limitation, blowing through these likely like they do not exist. Select Board and Town Management needs to have a townwide meeting to explain what has happened with the water and sewer rates and the Western Drive project since you circumvented and bypassed the citizens' budgetary rights. Significant portion of eleven million Western Dive Project is for major road reconstruction is being paid for with water and sewer funds, which has never been done before. This is what caused the significant increase in water and sewer rates. Road construction is done with general fund money from Chapter ninety, capital funds, or bonding. You've never discussed in your meeting why you're violating your own policy and any alternatives. There was a viable alternative. Also, can someone explain why there is an eighty thousand dollar tree allowance in the bid documents? Surely over a hundred trees will not be cut down. Sorry?
That's three minutes.
I had three seconds, but thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Katie Fabregas, nineteen, Robin Road. Um, I'm not as prepared as the gentleman before us, but I do just have a few questions. I am only twenty-seven years old. This is my first house and I just think it's absolutely insane that a lot of young individuals that want to join and live in this town feel like within just a few years, we're already being pushed out because of all of these crazy prices just being jacked up. I don't understand the eight percent or any of these percentages because our bill quite literally went up more than a hundred percent. Um, I know that we run a sprinkler system, but even our most expensive bills for summertime um, would only average around five to six hundred, so I'm not quite sure as to why our bill is almost fourteen hundred dollars. I speak on the behalf of other neighbors that are also young and couldn't be here because they have families and I just, I just don't think it's fair that how all of this is just going on in regards to pricing these increases just out of nowhere with quite literally no representation of anything. I don't really have too much more to say about that, but just an individual who um, feel like we're being pushed out of the town when we've only been here for three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Danielle Aldridge, one seventy-five Pleasantview Ave. So I did email the DPW like you suggested and I also spoke with them on the phone last week. And my concern is not necessarily with the rates, although that is a concern, but most importantly with the usage. So our usage jumped almost thirty percent in the quarter. My family was not in Long Meadow for the summer, so I there was no explanation why our usage went up so much. When I spoke with the DPW, they suggested that we might have a sprinkler leak, which is not possible. We know we don't have a sprinkler leak, but it doesn't seem like there's any resolution, like we're taking the steps that you're suggesting that we do. But we get road blocked. There's no further discussion with the DPW on what the solution could be, but it doesn't make any sense. So, I mean, we've lived in our house for eleven years. I know what the average water bill is. Our habits haven't changed. We have our sprinkler and a timer and we do own a second home. We were not here at all this summer. It doesn't make any sense. So I just am looking for an explanation like what the next step is for us if we can't get a resolution from the DPW. Thank you.
Anybody else for resident comment? Okay, Peggy, do we have anybody online?
Did you want to make a comment?
So I'm Susan Dudley-Ox. I live at one forty-five Massachusetts Avenue. I'm here because several of my neighbors said that they were going to come and, you know, they're not here. I opened up my water bill and it was seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And I've never had a water bill that high. And I looked at my water bill from last year this time and yes, I have a sprinkler system and I used it less this year because we had a lot of rain. I used it more last year. My water bill last year was four hundred and fifty dollars. So I'm not sure why there's such a significant increase in water sewer usage. So, um, I don't know. This is something that can be discussed at a select's meeting or a town meeting, but I'm just concerned because that's a pretty significant increase in a water bill. And I'm a senior citizen and I was planning on retiring, so. Um, and I know, and I don't know how to say this, but I know a couple of my neighbors called the town and the responses that they got from the town were pretty disparaging, um, so. Well, one person told my neighbor she should maybe get a part-time job. So I'm not sure who, um, that is or was, but, so. That's why I'm here is because I'm concerned about the water rates. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Looks like there's somebody on. Oh, yeah, Ms. Boudreaux, state your name and address and then you can speak. Should be able to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, my name's Leah Boudreaux. I live at one thirty-two Maple Road. I just want to comment about, um, you know, the notification and notice period that residents were given regarding this this matter. I understand that, um, the water sewer rate increases were subject to a long series of discussions, which were referenced in several agendas that were, you know, are listed, um, on, on, on the town's website, on the Select Board's website. My concern is that there was really no, you know, I, I know that these public meetings are that are open to the public. But I don't really know how a reasonable resident looking at any of the agendas leading up to this decision being made in June would be aware that, um, the Select Board was considering such a significant and consequential increase. And I really think that the, the inclusion on our, on the agendas was really lacking specificity and, and would make it kind of impossible for the average layperson to know that this was a matter that they needed to be paying attention to. I also noticed that there was no indication that a vote was being taken on this at a Select Board meeting in June. So, you know, the Select Board has said that they've given notice to us, but I don't really think there was sufficient notice in any of the agendas that were posted that would have made clear to residents that we should be paying attention and, and getting involved in these discussions, so. That's really my comment. Um, it's really about the, the transparency in, in, you know, this very consequential matter. Obviously, this evidently is very clearly impacting a lot of residents and the affordability of our town, so. And it's something that impacts every resident of, of the town of Long Meadow, so. Thank you for, with the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else online, Peggy? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to interviews and appointments, do we have? I had a note on my desk. Are, are Mr. Greenberg or Dr. Greenberg will not be joining us?
Greenberg is not available. Also, Mrs. Maranelli is not. So Leah is and Mr. Glenn is here.
President as well. Leah, thank you.
Okay, um, so our first interview will be, uh, Lea Farr for the Conservation Commission. You can have a seat or stand, whatever, more comfortable with. Oh, at the microphone, yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, so you're a new applicant. Can you tell us your interest in the Conservation Commission?
Sure. I have about a decade experience working with parks and rec and mitigation and stream restoration in both North Carolina and recently in Massachusetts. So I'm very interested in the conservation world and the, just being a part of this community, this is one way that I felt that would be my best interest to be, you know, a non-voting member and learn from the Conservation Commission. Um, and hopefully further my knowledge within what the ability of the Conservation Commission does because it is very different from my background knowledge. And I just wanted to be a part of that and learn from them.
Okay, and I think going into non-voting term is a good idea. Have you attended any meetings or talked to any of the current members?
I have attended a few meetings, um, and I have kind of briefly talked to the members during the meetings and talked to the conservation agent as well.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your interest. Any questions from the rest of the board?
No, I just want to say, I know, I know you just mentioned that uh, your experience doesn't necessarily relate directly to the Conservation Commission, but from looking at your application, it looks like it related enough and it seemed like a good fit to me, so thank you so much for, uh, applying for this position.
Thank you. Yeah, I do, um, work kind of indirectly with conservation commissions in the Berkshires, so it was something I wanted to be a part of down here as well.
Great, thank you. Um, so we vote on, uh, vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How do we have Mr. Glenn, interviewing for the Council on Aging and Board of Directors?
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for coming in. Do, uh, I, I didn't have Leah do it. Um, if you could introduce yourself, name and address.
John Glenn, fifteen Meriwether Drive.
Okay, now what's your interest in the Council on Aging and Board of Directors?
Well, uh, I absolutely qualify as a senior citizen here. I've lived in Long Meadow for about forty-six years. Um, I, I think my experience was personally and professionally in practice law, including human resources. For about forty years, I think that gives me the ability to advocate effectively on behalf of senior citizens regarding programmatic and, and service needs and I've always believed that, uh, if you live in a community, you should volunteer and provide services and I've done that to nonprofits, both in Long Meadow and in the greater Springfield area for the past forty years.
Thank you for your interest. Um, we have a very active Council on Aging, as you know.
I do.
Are you involved with them at all now? Have you met the members?
Uh, I know I've talked to several members extensively and, and in fact, both of them suggested that I get on board.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then we have, uh, two applicants for the Historic District Commission. She's online, okay.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Hi, yes.
Okay, do we, are they both on? Is it just Samantha? I'm sorry, we're, uh, we're not seeing any video.
Hands on person.
Hey, why don't you come up? We.
Aren't you going to talk? Does she need to talk or?
We, we can both do it all.
I can go first.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm up for reappointment. I'm a registered architect and they need a registered architect on the commission, so. I'm staying on.
I remember when you, uh, applied the first time. Thank you for reappointment.
They just need someone with my credentials.
How is the work going?
I'm happy to stay there.
Yeah, how's the work going for you?
It's fine. It's good. Yeah. We just got a new head, so it's kind of changed a little bit, but it's good.
Okay, good. Uh, anything, we always ask when people are here for reappointment, anything you want to bring to our attention, anything we should know about?
Nope. Everything's going pretty well, I think.
Well, thank you for your continued interest.
You're welcome.
Samantha?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Can you say your name and address?
Sure, um, I'm Samantha Gendrum. My address is fifteen Parkside Street.
Okay, what, uh, why are you applying for the Historic District Commission?
Um, well, I have lived in Long Meadow my entire life, over thirty years. The historical homes in this town really matter to me and I live in one myself. And it's just important for me, I think, to be on this committee and just keep that going. The historical district in Long Meadow is um, beautiful and really has so much rich, rich history and I just want to make that, preserve that, be a part of that.
Great, thank you for your interest. Have you had, as an owner of an historic home, have you had any dealings with the commission?
Um, I have. I have, but I'm right outside the historic district, so I've applied for stuff, but I didn't need to. Cause I'm just right on the other side of the cemetery, which is, I guess, technically right outside of the historic district. But I, I speak, I've spoken with Sarah. She's a friend of mine. I've worked with her a little bit. And I'm also, um, worked in the contracting world, um, as an interior painter and exterior painter, so I have that, um, as my background as well and I've done a lot of historic homes, not necessarily in this town, but in other towns.
Okay. Very good. Uh, any questions from the rest of the board? Okay, thank you for your interest and again, we'll vote on you at a future meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, uh, we have one appointment. Uh, Mike, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is a, um, reappointment to the Casino Mitigation Fund, Community Mitigation Fund Local Advisory Committee. Lou Cornet has served on the board since twenty twenty. Um, he's done an excellent job of updating us on current funding initiatives for the state and all things related to advocating for grant money for Western Massachusetts, so it's our recommendation that we reappoint Mr. Cornet to the committee for a five-year term.
And thi- this funding is changing.
It is changing. It's, it's dropping significantly. We were, I think, on average, we were funded about three hundred thousand a year in the past. It's going down to about eighty thousand.
Right, so, um, I wonder if we could get Mr. Cornet in soon to discuss that?
Yeah.
Have a conversation about what we, what we should do going forward.
Certainly.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, just echo real quickly that, uh, Mr. Cornet is doing a great job in this. Every time I see him, he's got an update. He's, this is something that he's really passionate about and takes this role very seriously, so, um, this is, I think, a no-brainer to reappoint him to this, so having said that, I'll make a motion to, uh, reappoint Lou Cornet to the, uh, Local Casino Mitigation Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right, I think you got you.
I know, we've held the phone.
All right, anything further? And Peggy, these will have to all be roll votes today.
We're calling.
Yep.
Josh?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, um, so moving on to public comments, uh, I'll go first, if everyone has a mind. Uh, I don't know the final score, but the girls' soccer team are on their way to the state championship. They won tonight. Uh, very proud of their run. The whole town is rooting for them later this week to take it down. I also want to congratulate the boys' soccer team on an incredible season. Uh, Western Mass champs and they were on the brink of the Final Four after a thrilling game late last week. Uh, played their hearts out to the end, so a great job to both our teams. Very, very happy for them and their success. Uh, I would also like to address the, uh, water and sewer bill situation. And, uh, I know people are upset about their bills and I, I get that. I've explained in many private conversations over the last week, the reasons why the rates went up, but I don't think it's really made it out to the masses. Uh, the fact is our public water and sewer infrastructure is old, incredibly old. Many of our pipes are a hundred years old, more than half are sixty years old and we just can't wait for catastrophe to strike or keep patching problem spots. That costs money that we can't budget for and it takes up the time of our DPW, which has a lot of other important things to do and we have trouble staffing. Uh, the widespread deferred maintenance, which is a term that I've really grown to loathe in my time in office, is not something I can easily pinpoint the reasons for, but I can tell you it's absolutely tied to our history of pretty minimal rate crease, increases and relative to other towns that buy Springfield water, right near the bottom of the pack. Uh, the DPW, at least in my time on the board, started ringing the alarm bell the last three years and it's no mystery to anyone paying attention that we have water main breaks, culvert collapses, sewer issues constantly. Uh, even knowing all this, the Select Board was hesitant to jump in until the off-delayed tie and bond study arrived this year. If you go back and watch our meetings from April through June, you can see how much we wrestled with the idea of raising rates. But we were alarmed by how dire things were in a large swath of the town. I stand by what we did and because we were told there's a problem with our infrastructure and we can't be complacent and save it for the next board or the one after, when things will be even more expensive and the rate increases even worse. And let's not forget the infrastructure spend is on top of rate increases for our water from Springfield, which is starting a new plant, is building a new plant to make our water safer, hopefully. And they're not going down anytime soon. The fact is, we can either have infrastructure that works or we can artificially low rates and then scramble to put Band-Aids on pipes when things break, only for them to break again. You can't have it both ways. And to say that we lack transparency on this topic is, I, I think, wrong. There were five publicly noticed hearings that anyone could watch live or on YouTube. Uh, and just that we got a question about our agenda. And the agenda says set water rates. I get that, but if you look underneath, it also has the recommended water rates. They were linked on there. The tie and bond study, it was all on there. You have to dig a bit, but it was there. It was covered in the reminder four times in the headlines. We sent out a mailer in August with the last water bill and members, including me, did social media posts that rates were going up. I don't expect everyone to watch our meetings, of course, but the intention, the information was put out there in other ways. Now, does that mean we did the water, the rollout perfectly? Uh, given the reaction we've gotten, I, I would say no. But I truly, maybe naively, thought that what we do at these meetings twice a month makes it out to the public in any of the ways I, I mentioned above. And maybe people vaguely knew the water rate increase was coming, but didn't realize the end effect. But information was out there. We've held information sessions on other similar topics and we're lucky that fifteen people show up. It's usually a handful of people or like for our stretch code session we just had, no one showed up. The only thing I can really think of is a reverse nine-one-one call, which people do not like receiving. Uh, it should be only used sparingly so it doesn't come background noise. And as we learned from the trash bin change, trash bin change rollout, it still doesn't reach every resident. Now, I think there are some lessons we can learn as a board here. Um, but I think there's a lesson for residents to, to know that we are making decisions here that matter and you can be involved while it's happening. Uh, finally, I want to touch on the accusations that we did something illegal. Uh, that is one hundred percent wrong. I'm going to read a letter from our town council on this. This is from Ja- Jason R. Tallerman, uh, from Mead Tallerman Acosta, addressed to the Select Board and Lynn Simmons, um, sewer and water rates dated today. Uh, to Lynn and members of the Select Board, you have requested our opinion with respect to the above referenced matter. Specifically, you have asked about the scope of the Select Board's authority acting as sewer and water commissioners to impose water, sewer and water rates beyond those that were contemplated under the enterprise fund budgets approved by the annual town meeting. In my opinion, the Select Board is not constrained by the town meeting vote or later determining to raise rates, subject to other safeguards that may be applicable. As this threshold matter, the Select Board adding, uh, acting as the town's water and sewer commissioners has the authority under Mass General Law's Chapter forty-one, Section sixty-nine B and Mass General Law's Chapter eighty-three, Section sixteen, for the imposition of user fees to cover the expenses of operating the town's water and sewer departments. As the town has adopted enterprise fund accounting, see General Law Chapter forty-four, Section- As the town has adopted enterprise fund accounting, see General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, for its water and sewer departments, that's enough. The Select Board is also charged with the authority to develop a budget for the enterprise, which is presented to the town meeting for its review and approval. Furthermore, it is elemental that the user fees for water and sewer may include fees to accommodate potential capital needs. This is underscored in Section three point one of the town's water regulations. Although the setting of water and sewer rates is related to the enterprise budget, it is a separate process that is not addressing the enterprise fund statutory process. Stated differently, while the development of an enterprise fund budget requires contemplation of expected revenues, it does not prescribe the method of setting such rates or the timing thereof, nor are there any cases that tie the processes together in any binding manner. Accordingly, while the Select Board is charged with estimating revenues for the development of an enterprise fund budget, which is due by March first of every year, there is nothing in such statutory framework that precludes the Select Board from subsequently increasing user fees based upon the needs of the water or sewer department. While DOR requires reporting of any significant increases in revenue, and while all fee increases must reasonably relate to the operational or capital needs of the enterprise, it is our opinion that the Select Board may choose to raise your, user fees in its annual rate-setting process, which I understand is traditionally held after the date of town meeting. In any event, any fees that may be collected in excess of the operating expenses approved by town meeting are subject to appropriation should capital projects be contemplated. It is also noteworthy that while DOR suggests that a town may choose to set user fees at the same time as the, that the budget is being developed for presentation at town meeting, the relevant statutes do not require that such processes be synchronized. I hope this memorandum is helpful. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any further questions that you may have, and signed by our council. I'm going to post what I said tonight on the Long Meadow, Facebook Long Meadow Open Forum, which I am loathe to go to. And Lynn worked with town staff on creating an infographic that she's going to put on town websites and socials after review by the board. People are going to be upset by the rate changes regardless, and I understand that, but I want the curious to know how we got here. Anybody else want to fill the air here?
Well, thank you. I mean, I feel like that was pretty comprehensive, and thank you for making that comment, but I also just wanted to add my two cents as well. I know that, well, first of all, I want to thank everyone that came here tonight and made a comment, and that has reached out to us and sent an email and everything. Even if you knew that these water rates were coming, I understand getting that bill and seeing that increase is extremely frustrating. It can be extremely distressing, and I completely understand that. I mean, I think we had a resident talk about, you know, the pressures on young families financially these days, and also our senior citizens. Now, I'm a father with a kindergartner and a preschooler, and with childcare costs and student loan debt and all these different things. I, you know, I feel it too, and I know that this is a really difficult thing for, for, to have, to have happened. You know, we started this process about two years ago when we first started talking about this. So, you know, at that, I think over the course of that time, we've had nine meetings where we specifically had this on the agenda and talked about it. This has also been an ongoing conversation that has come up as we've talked about so many different things, and it's been an ongoing conversation for two years. Two years ago, it would have been impossible for us to project, you know, what the economy in November of twenty twenty-five would look like. And I know that right now, we're seeing utility rates increase, we're seeing grocery prices increase, we're seeing everything increase. And so this is a really difficult time for water rates to also be increasing. I also know, though, that we, as a Select Board, we're backed into a corner here. And people have presented or put up theories for why these water rate increases happened, that, you know, that they're because of road repairs, that they're because we're trying to make up for twenty to thirty years of inaction in one fell swoop. But it's really not even that complicated. It's that we are going from completely neglecting and doing nothing on a whole sector of our infrastructure to now doing something. Before, you know, the idea that we weren't using water rates to patch up roads, that was never even a problem before because we weren't even replacing water mains. We didn't even have roads to patch up before. And we are not trying to make up for twenty or thirty years of inaction in, in this one, you know, this one rate increase. This is us moving from doing absolutely nothing to us basically going into triage mode, where we're just trying to address our infrastructure little by little here. And there has been a real cost to us not taking care of our infrastructure. Half of, you know, I think Josh, you know, he, he shared some statistics. We have over half of our water infrastructure blinking red right now. That's in critical need of repairs. We're seeing water main breaks happen left or right, which is extremely obviously disruptive to our homeowners who all of a sudden don't have access to water for hours on end. It's extremely disruptive to our DPW, who then have to stop what they're doing to take care of a water main break. And it's also just financially inefficient that, you know, we are spending so much money on patching up water mains when we should have been taking care of them all along. And this is a change in philosophy for the Select Board. Because before, the Select Board was prioritizing keeping water rates low at the cost of everything else, at the cost of our crumbling infrastructure. There were times when actually our reserves for our Water Enterprise Fund had money in it that they could have been using to address our infrastructure, but instead they use that money to keep water rates low, which is a practice that's not really used in any other municipality, in which, when we'd go out and talk to people about this, people were shocked that we were doing this. So they had opportunities to do this, and they did not. And now we have, you know, we are basically in a position where we have to start addressing this. This eight or, you know, nine million dollar project that we approved for at Fall Special Town Meeting, that project, if we wait another five or ten years, is going to be that much more expensive. If this project had actually been taken care of twenty years ago when it was supposed to be, it would have been that much cheaper. And that is, you know, what we're wrestling with here and when we're making these decisions, because we're all homeowners here too. We are also impacted by these rates, but I think all of us feel that we have to be a Select Board that is now actually taking care of what we have in our town, that we're actually maintaining what we have, that we're not letting things crumble and break to the point of no return. And that is a huge philosophical change since I've been on the Select Board. And, and, you know, when we first got this study in twenty twenty-three, I, you know, I'll remember this. I was, you know, and we heard about how bad our infrastructure was and how it had been neglected for twenty or thirty years. I said at the time, you know, how shocked I was, and that we had to start addressing this. And a former member of the Select Board who was sitting here with me, he said, you know, Vinith, I know that's right, and that's the right thing to do, but if we do this, none of us will be sitting here after our next election. And that was the thinking before, was to take votes, because they didn't want folks mad at them. They didn't want folks to come here and make comments or to send emails. But I think all of us understood that eventually someone has to do what's right for the town and needs to start taking care of, you know, what we have. And I felt, you know, what I answered, you know, to that was, I felt that if I was doing what was right for the town, that I should be able to go out and explain it to folks, and that I should be able to communicate that to folks, and that the people, that the people of Long Meadow, you know, need to be treated like adults and need to be told the truth. And so, you know, that's, that's really what this change, kind of the background of all this, has been. And I know that this is extremely difficult, and everyone has a right to feel, you know, angry about this. But, you know, that is the perspective of, you know, why we did this and why these rates have occurred.
Would you believe?
Well, we have to ask a question here.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you can send an email or something after.
Well, we did send an email, but nobody responded to us. So we'll send another one now.
We got, we got a lot of emails. Send us an email.
Okay, so there's no more questions after you guys move on to the issue? Oh, okay. I guess it's hard to be able to comment if you're getting this.
I agree.
We're gonna first one.
Yeah, so first one.
Same.
I will just add, you know, I think Josh and Vinith, literally, I was prepared to say a lot of, pretty much everything you said, so I appreciate both of you sharing your perspective. And I think that the only thing I'd add is, if you look back at the many hours of discussion we had on this, each of us was very clear-eyed about the incredible backlog of infrastructure that we needed to face. We were all very sober and serious about how to address it, and there was pretty much consensus on doing this. You know, we deliberated, we discussed it, but it was not a difficult decision. Because, you know, it, for better or worse, we know what's happening. We've discussed how people don't take the time to watch our, our meetings and come to the meetings and things like that. The five of us know what's happening, and when you have a general consensus like we did, I, I, I agree, oh my God, we, we did the right thing for the town. That does not mean that all of us disliked getting the bills. There's no question about that. But I do want everyone to know that it was very seriously deliberated and discussed, and we thought very hard about it. I mean, there's, there's plenty of evidence and reason to consider, no one's going to want to hear this, but like, there was, there's clear arguments to do much more than we did. And we don't want to, we don't want to burden people more than we need to, of course, but I think it would have been a mistake to just push this under the rug and wait for someone else to do it in the future. And, and to be honest, I, I don't, you know, I don't really blame past Select Boards in the sense that I honestly think everyone who sits in these seats is doing their very best to allocate scarce resources that we have. There were many things in our town that we did over the last fifteen years that many people appreciate. Everything from free kindergarten to an adult center that everybody loves and uses. So whatever we, we have, you know, we have a limited amount of resources, and we have, as a town, have to decide how to use them. And, you know, if we, and of course, it's nice, you know, there's a benefit to having lower water rates. But the fact that we had such a huge backlog, the fact that we were so far below the average water rates in the region and still remain below average, I think that were very important factors in our decision-making. So I think that Josh made a good point. We obviously don't do things perfectly, and when we look back in retrospect, we could have and should have, in retrospect, done a lot more communication any possible way we could have. But I also think the townspeople can meet us halfway and try to pay attention more, watch a meeting, learn how the system works. And I know it's, we're all very busy, but we, I think the whole community will benefit if people know more and will do our best in the future, I'm sure, to communicate as much as we can.
And just on that point, Andrew, our meetings, we have four-hour meetings sometimes. It's, it's dull. There's a lot that people don't want to hear about, and I, I understand that. We are very lucky that we have a free paper that gets thrown at everyone's door where this issue came up and this exact rate was put in there. And so it was not, a lot of towns aren't that lucky to have free local journalism. That is, that, we get that. And so I, I know some people don't get it, or some previous homeowner canceled the service, but I, I think that the fact that that's out there, it's a great resource that I wish people would take advantage of. And I think that's a great way to meet us halfway. You don't want to watch the meetings, I get that. But read, read the article. There's one page on Long Meadow every week. It's Austin School Committee, Planning Board, that's it. So it's, it's worth a read.
Just, yeah, one quick comment. I know I'm newest to the Select Board. This was one of the first topics I had to get up to speed with when I first joined, and it's, it is fairly complex. And, and I appreciate the way all of my colleagues just articulated some of the process and some of, some of the thought and decision-making that went into it. Had I voted and been on there, I would have voted to increase based on what I learned and what I, what I talked through. I'm a homeowner as well. I knew these would go up. I do agree with my Select Board colleagues that this was the right decision for the town, although difficult. And I can honestly say it was taken a lot of different factors, and, and information was taken into account. I appreciate the way Josh laid it out and Vinith, some of the history, and Andrew with the history, because I think that's helpful. I just wanted to say that this was one of the topics. It was highly complex. It was one of the first things I had to get up, learn about. And even after learning it and understanding what those increases would be, I, I would have voted yes to increase this. And so I know it's not a popular decision. I know it was not an easy decision, but it is a decision that's going to help our town in the long run.
I think part of the problem is that it's a very, it's an abstract thing. We could knock on every door and say, your water rate per unit is going to be six dollars and seventy-three cents or whatever it was. People would say, oh, okay. It's, it's hard to conceptualize unless you look at your past bills and realize what that means, and that's... We don't take out public comment. Thank you.
I have a question. How come you guys don't take comments back and forth if this is a discussion?
Because we would, we would, it's not a discussion. We would go all night if that was the case.
It's the form of the way our town, the, the leading regulations and laws are, the way the towns run. I, I know I was getting up to speed on them too and how they go. There are certain processes and procedures, and so public comment. And, and so that, that's why there's not the back and forth. It's not meant to be like to shut people down. It's just the way our, our regulations are and the procedures for Select Board meetings.
Okay, so would you send emails, list of the timeframe of you guys responding back, just out of curiosity? Because I don't want to sit here all night if my breath isn't gonna matter and I can't go back and forth. So do you actually answer your emails or no? Because I
Yes.
feel like when I even called the DPW, I couldn't get ahold of anybody.
Yes, and so, so, so for us, for the Select Board, yes, we do. You'd either get a response from someone on the Select Board or our town manager would respond for us. And we do try to do that within the timeframe between meetings. Keep me honest if any of, I'm not accurate. If it comes from one of the departments and you're not getting a response, that's where I would then say Mike and Lynn would then help step in and ensure you get the responses. They're just separate, they're just separate departments other than the Select Board. So I can understand how frustrating that would be, and you are not the only one to say that you haven't got a response from some. So that is something that I do know Lynn and Mike will be taking back to the departments to get that. But for the Select Board, you can always do that, and we usually address them at the next meeting when, when we get the email itself. It's on the list in the agenda.
If you look at the agenda today, there's a number of emails.
There's a lot of emails. And we know we have more that have even come in since then, so they'll most likely be on the list for the next meeting as well.
So when I email you guys in the DPW and in regards to questions that I came to mind after?
If you go to the website, you go to the Select Board or Town Manager page, there's like generic emails, townmanager@longmeadowma.gov, selectboard@longmeadowma.gov, publicworks@longmeadow, CC, all three of those accounts, multiple people will respond. Were able to see those accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just one more thing before, for those in the room who did speak and share your concerns, I think something that we're all struggling with on the board that you can hear is, we have these vehicles to communicate with everyone as residents, and we know that everyone receives information differently, and everyone's lives are really different. If you have ideas or suggestions on ways with which the Select Board could reach more residents or would be more helpful or a more productive way to communicate, we're really open to that. I think where you, you heard we're using the vehicles we have as elected officials right now, but if there are other ways, and as a resident, look, I get it, it's just, we would be open to hearing what those are, and then we can take that back and start to leverage those suggestions and, and, and even bring that to one of the next meetings to talk about what that would look like. I think we're open to that feedback.
And the reason it's not normally a conversation, this is not the norm, I'll tell you. It's not, not, and I think it's fine, Shelley. That wasn't chastising.
No, no, thanks.
Because we have a lot of other, the rest of the agenda. We have a lot of business to get through that we do every week. And so to, emailing us is the best time to get through. All right, anybody else? Okay. All right, moving on to, we have no applications tonight. Moving on to presentations and guest speakers. We have Fussin O'Neill to talk about the Town Hall, Community House, and Old Town Hall Building Study.
Probably a couple extra hard copies. Do you need them?
That would be great.
Yeah. Yeah, pull up one.
Do you have a?
What are, are you going in there?
Would you like to do the properties report, the property assessments first, and the staffing last?
Do we do William Street or?
Uh, yeah, we'll do, um, we'll do the, the common house.
Okay.
And then William Street. And then four seventeen Long Meadow Street. And then we can do facilities, staffing, and budget last?
Does it come in house?
Community House one.
Maybe, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
There's not three for stacks. That's a report.
You definitely don't have to stay, but you can.
I'm actually interested.
We're not, we're not your usual audience.
I believe it's one report.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Oh, these are each individual reports, yeah.
Yeah, because the picture is sort of thick.
So we need the old, the Old Town Hall. Is there an Old Town Hall?
Yeah, I'll pass it up.
This one's easier.
Yeah, that works.
You guys need another one, I mean, thank you.
There's no, there's two, right?
There's no Old Town Hall.
Thank you so much.
We're looking for Old Town. We're looking for Old Town Hall. Yeah, the 417, yes.
So there are three properties total.
Yep, it's working on this side.
Promising.
Thanks. We're starting with three days.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, Mike Nelson from Fussin O'Neill, we're an engineering consulting firm that works with the town of Long Meadow. We have four reports in front of you tonight. Three of them mimic each other, they are property condition reports for the Community House, the Old Town Hall and 417 Long Meadow Street. These are town-owned buildings. We were approached during the summer by the town manager and DPW. They were seeking engineers to do a condition assessment of these buildings. In addition, they were also seeking input on the facilities department, how it is staffed, how it's budgeted and how it, specifically how it's organized. I think the town had, had solicited, you know, RFQs for these things and, and got no responses. We got involved, we broke the studies into two pieces. So the property condition reports was, was like task one, and the facilities budget and staffing was like task two. So for the condition reports, we paired with an architect, Amenta Emma, who I believe has done work in town before. And we walked the buildings, we walked the properties with town staff from multiple departments to do an assessment of what would it take to get these buildings up to code? What would it take to get these buildings restored from a maintenance perspective and, and capital investment perspective? And what I wanna do tonight is give you the highlights of the three condition reports. It's written by mechanical and HVAC engineers and architects, it's not bad, but it's very specific. The doorknobs are not compliant with current code. So we will not be going over the doorknobs tonight. But I wanna give you sort of the upshot of, of the three condition assessment reports and then we'll move on, okay? So I've just highlighted a couple passages to report out. The first property is the Community House at 735 Long Meadow Street, it was built in nineteen twenty. Just over twenty-four thousand square feet. As you can see, it's a large brick masonry building with like Greek revival-style columns. It's very prominent on the, on the wall on the Long Meadow Greenway. For all of these studies, the scope was mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection systems, so MEP, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. The roof, the building envelope, site civil, and then interior, interior building systems. Each report is laid out in the same fashion, listing the elements of the building and what the findings were. So it's heavy on observations, and at the end of each section are recommendations. So a couple of recommendations that stand out for the Community House. I should also mention before we get there that the most interesting part that everyone wants to see are, is the costs, which is in appendix F at the end. So if you wanna skip right to the costs, you can rip them out like I did and bring them right to the front. Great, and I will walk you through the narrative. So the Community House has a slate tile roof, which is very nice, but is old and requires maintenance. The good news is the cupola was in decent shape, but roof repairs are required. The roof repairs that were able to be inspected visually were around a hundred thousand dollars is the cost estimate. The architect, Amenta Emma, actually had professional cost estimating services for these. So these are not based on recent bid costs or in-town projects. These are based on like RS Means and Timberline, which are cost estimating softwares which are used in the vertical construction. So, sorry for the aside, so the roof does need repairs, it was estimated to be about a hundred thousand dollars. The building envelope was in fair condition, windows were in fair condition, they recommended reglazing. But the big item for the building envelope was the porch columns and the brick repointing. It's a lot of brick, it does need to be repointed. Those, those improvements were almost a million dollars, about eight hundred thousand dollars and change just for that building envelope improvements. So that is a large ticket item. On the building interior, the bathrooms are in need of basically top-to-bottom renovation. And the carpets and flooring, to be expected, are in need of renovation. As are some of the walls and a lot of the ceramic tile and the, the wall surfaces are in need of renovation. The total for the building envelope, roof and, and the repointing was about one point five million dollars for this building. There were some short-term recommendations that were about four hundred thousand dollars for this building for all the miscellaneous repairs. One thing to note for this building and others is that if there is a change in use, one of the directives we were given by the town was what would we do with this building if we kept it a town building? And for all of the floors and the, and the weights of the building, you need a structural engineer to just make sure that the future use is appropriate. Right now, it's, it was mostly office building, so similar use is probably appropriate. But if you wanted to turn it into an indoor basketball court, you might have to have someone look at it. But overall, it was in fair condition. Access and ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, was an issue at every building. Some of them are more prominent, the Community House does need an elevator. All of the door hardware is not compliant. There is one toilet that is accessible on the ground floor. There are no other accessible bathrooms. There is some utility piping that causes pinch points in the corridors that does not meet ADA. Things like stair handrails and stair widths and tread, tread arrangements do not meet ADA. So for a public building, the ADA upgrades would be a significant cost as well. All the buildings we looked at were powered by natural gas, which is a nice, cheap source of energy. This particular building had a gas-fired steam boiler, it has cast iron radiators, which are lovely but old. One leak was detected, not serious. There is an abandoned heating fuel oil tank in the basement, which will need to be removed properly. There were several rooms, such as the kitchen and the dance hall studio, with no ventilation other than the windows. So some HVAC upgrades were necessary. Building is not sprinklered, which could be an issue for a public building of that size. That could be a significant upgrade. For electrical, the major takeaway was that there is knob and tube wiring, which is badly outdated. The wiring systems work, the building systems work, but the wiring system is very antiquated and probably needs to be redone. Fire alarm system was found to be in fair condition, smoke detector coverage and condition was fair. It's really the sprinkling of the building that would be the major cost there. We move on to site conditions, one thing that is noteworthy, kind of unrelated to this study, but none of these parcels would meet current parking regulations in Long Meadow. So by your own parking zoning, the combined property of the Community House and Old Town Hall would need like a hundred and seven parking spots, which you could not fit there. So I found that interesting on the parking minimums. There were some ADA accessible issues outside of the building on sidewalks and ramps, but they were much less significant than the interior of the building. And lighting really had no high-value overhaul items. So, what we've done is we've split each building's cost estimate into their major elements. So architectural elements, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, MEP elements, and some site civil elements. We give two tables for each category, immediate needs and short-term needs. We were not looking at, you know, long-term, hundred-year solutions because I think the town is gonna take this input and decide what, you know, the fate of these buildings may be. So for architectural, it was just less than two million dollars added up for this building. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing was just shy of three hundred and fifty thousand. I'm sorry, plus ninety-three, so it was actually four hundred and fifty thousand for both tables together. And the heating systems, the HVAC specifically, heating systems had two, HVAC and fire had two large-ticket items. Replacement of the heating elements and all of the controls was seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And the other large-ticket item was the code-compliant fire protection system, including design, would be about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So you are well north of three million dollars in acquired improvements for all of these, these code issues for this building. This is by far the largest building of the three.
But the smoke alarms are okay.
But the smoke alarms are okay. The building itself, the envelope and everything is in fair condition, like to, to restore it. But the problem is the, like the ADA, the electrical, HVAC, these systems are old, in need of replacement, and it would be a significant investment.
Quick question. Was sprinkler, putting a sprinkler system in not included in this, in any of these estimates? That's in addition?
No, the sprinkler system was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, found on the last page.
So if you added up all of these, all of these together, I had just happened to do it off the cuff and it was like five million. Is that correct, or was I off?
Yeah, it's, it's close to five million dollars.
Okay, 'cause I was just adding up the thousands places, and I was just like, just to get a ballpark idea. So if you added it all up, that's what you get, you're getting?
Between like three, three point five million to five million dollars.
Literally everything listed, if you, if all the recommendations are assumed, it was over five million?
If you do every single recommendation, yeah, but a lot of the major elements are like already exceeding three million.
Understood.
Lynn, what are we currently using the building for?
Community House?
Yeah.
There's a dance studio on the second floor that's the primary use right now?
And elections?
And then elections, yeah.
There's no offices, nothing else in there now, not, not being used? Are we, I mean, I, I think we probably could've gleaned some of this just from walking around the building, but are, are there things that we should do now for those uses? That we are leaving ourselves liable by not doing or endangering our residents?
My biggest concern has always been ADA access. So that, that is, you know, something that certainly should be addressed if we're gonna continue to allow the public in there.
I mean, to be honest, it seems to me that it's very possible, we have additional space elsewhere in town that these such activities could be done, like, you know, so, like there's a gym right across the courtyard here for a dance class or things like that, so. I think if it came down to like investing in stopgaps to like allow those activities to continue, it would be far more efficient just to move those activities and let's decide exactly what we're gonna do long-term with this building, essentially.
I don't know if this is in the scope of Mike's presentation, but, and we're gonna get to it shortly, but people, people don't want this to leave our hands. And so it's, it's good to know, I think especially in this, this building, how much it's going to cost us and what we really need to do. And also, while we're doing it, we don't just wanna up the code, we probably wanna make it better.
Yeah.
But it is, it's very expensive, but, yeah.
That was the intent of this, the original scope had, you know, public meetings for input for future uses, what could be there, meeting with all the departments to figure out what space they were deficient on. And all of that got stripped away to meet the budget, and we asked our, like, we had a conversation, what is the most important thing to understand right now? And what we decided was, what does it take to get up to code? What is it gonna take to do the deferred maintenance list and any capital improvements related to the building systems? So that was ninety percent of our scope, was doing that.
I know we did our own cheapo survey, but it was still useful, so.
I mean, I agree with you, Josh, in the sense that like, the, the survey that we did, it shows that of these three buildings, there is likely a strong feeling that the town should retain this building. So then the question is, we need a use for it that's worthy of five-plus million dollars. And I think that that is the missing piece. I think we all want it to be used and useful. But I don't think anybody thinks we should, especially in this climate that we've just been experiencing with the middle school and, and people being, you know, frustrated with the expenses of living in our town, we need to have a real good reason that can be a message and a purpose that everybody can get behind. And maybe we don't, and I've thought about this a great deal, and maybe we don't have that right this second. The other buildings that people feel far less attached to, I mean, I think people do wanna preserve these buildings historically, but we also recognize the opportunity cost of not allowing them to be used, not only for our community, but also lack of, you know, losing on our property tax benefits as well and the cost of maintaining them. But I think maybe we need to start having a very robust community discussion about ideas about what it could be for our town. We know now how much it will cost, and that's an important part.
It's the first step. Anything else on the Community House, rest of the board? Or Mike, move on?
Okay. Okay, this report is formatted in a similar way. Each of those building elements that we just went through repeats for 20 William Street. Again, the cost estimates related to intermediate and immediate, or I'm sorry, immediate and short-term cost recommendations are found in the back, and I will walk you through it. So again, 20 William Street is located very close proximity to the last property. It again is a masonry-style, like colonial or federal-style building. And it presents similar challenges, it has all the challenges of maintaining a historic building with the challenges of it being retrofitted with municipal infrastructure over the years that need upgrades. So diving right in, 20 William Street is located on point nine-four acres of land between William Street and Long Meadow Street. It is six thousand six hundred and thirty-four square feet of living arid, area on three floors. Roof is again slate tile, repairs are recommended, it was in fair condition, and we have pictures of some of the specific repairs. Standing water was noted at the building's edge, meaning that there's also drainage issues with the downspouts, possibly sump pump and site grading. The standing water at the edge of the building has resulted in some damage along the edges of the building envelope. Again, windows are in fair condition, reglazing was recommended for thermal considerations, all of the windows are old, but in fair condition. Brick repointing is again recommended, this time also by replacing all the exterior trim between the roof and the masonry. Building envelope actually was pretty good with a short list of recommendations. It was found that there is a small deflection in the roof line on the second floor that could be looked at, but other than that, they were minor issues. Moving to accessibility, it is an issue with this building if it were going to be a public use. The main door does have an exit ramp, none of the other entrances are compliant. The staircase is central to the building, right, so very typical of like a New England-style home. And because of that, the layout of the other rooms and the hallways is very limiting for what you can get in terms of ADA accessibility, and it would be limited to the first floor. And I don't believe that this building is appropriate, or has an appropriate spot for an elevator. Community House is much larger. Again, it's heated by natural gas, it has a boiler, which is in excellent condition, replaced in 2012, which was, was a plus. We did find that there are older pieces of equipment, many of these buildings had several heating and HVAC We did find that there are older pieces of equipment, many of these buildings had several heating and HVAC systems, so they might have a boiler and split systems. This particular property has offices retrofitted into it, so there were several heating systems, like four different office spaces. In general, there were some pumps that needed to be replacing, some controls that needed replacing, but at least the, the larger units were in better shape. There is a chiller, two-and-a-half-ton carrier chiller for HVAC that does need to be replaced, it is in poor condition, unclear if it is in working condition. That was one of the larger-ticket items on this building, the air conditioning. Mechanical ventilation for the office areas was very similar to the last building, that not every space was ventilated. I had mentioned the pumps, heaters, controls, and the chiller. Once again, for fire suppression, this building is not sprinkled, which would be another significant investment. Unique situation for this building is it does not have its own electrical power supply, the power supply comes from the police station. So that will be another consideration in its future use. So it does not have its own dedicated meter or supply, but because it is fed by the police station, it has robust emergency power.
Excellent.
On the first floor.
Yes, it is on the first floor.
Not the rest of the building.
Ask Lynn how she knows. It is on the first floor, conveniently located, not conveniently located. But it has 50 kilowatts of generator and an automatic transfer switch, which essentially is serving the police station. Summary from the electrical system and fire. Upgrade the fire system was the largest of those items. Once again, not zoning compliant for parking. De minimis ADA access issues in the site outside the building compared to the inside. Moving to the cost estimate. For the architectural evaluation, we had two large line items. If you decided elevator access to the floors would be needed, we have an estimate of $380,000 for that, to try to fit that in. Repointing of the brick is again expensive, I can personally attest to that, that came in at about 515,000 for the repointing of the exterior of the, and that's the entire building. Altogether, the architectural elements of this building upgrades is just shy of 2 million dollars. The MEP portion, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Came to 487,000, which is substantially less than the community house and the large-ticket item there being the, the HVAC replacements, which I just lost my hand on. $189,000. No, that's the, for the sprinklers.
I think it's 137.
Sorry, I'm searching for the chiller replacement, but we have a total cost for the recommended improvements, everything on the list was 2.7 million dollars. So it's less than half, but it is a much smaller building, but a lot of the elements are the same. It's ADA access, it's electrical, and it's repointing and, and the roof, right, the historic elements of the building.
So I, I'm not an ADA expert by any means. If this was, say, not, you keep saying public building, but you mean where the public can go, that's if it's a business, that's anything beyond a personal residence?
Yeah, if it, if it were a town office or if there were a town department that resided there that needed to interact with the public.
What if it was a business that had people, customers coming?
Like a professional office building, for example, you'd still have to have the same.
You would still have to have ADA compliance.
I guess what my question is, is it that, is there different guidelines for a business versus a town?
That's not an area I'm an expert in.
I don't believe there is.
I don't, yeah, I believe businesses are required to have accessibility.
I think so too, I'm just hoping you weren't.
The sprinkling is, yeah, the requirements are the same, but the cost is far less because of, you're not, a private developer would use not prevailing wage and it would just be a lot less expensive in some ways.
That's correct.
But the requirements would be the same.
Yeah. Private housing would not have those requirements, public housing would. And the, one of the details in the ADA section of the report, it's not only like, what is, it is not accessible, but like how much is accessible based on like the occupancy of the building? So is one ADA accessible bathroom on the first floor enough for what's happening in that building?
Gotcha.
Okay, last property assessment report, we'll move on to facilities. The smallest of the properties, 417 Long Meadow Street. I am not going to give you the exact same speech I did for the last one. We will go to the cost estimate and we will highlight those same items. So again, for the architectural evaluation, this is the building envelope, the roof. Well, I should, I should first start by saying that this building is different. Yes, it still is a masonry front, it still has an architectural roof. It is not in the same location as the other two buildings, it's down Long Meadow Street, it is much smaller than the other two buildings. Again, brick repointing is recommended, $150,000, much less surface area. There was some foundation repair noted, which the other buildings did not note foundation repairs. We have an estimate of $67,000, that is an allowance, but we do recommend like structural evaluation of that, we did not like do a full structural evaluation during the site visit, we had representatives from each trade. So on this one, it's a note that the foundation might have moderate issues. The total for the architectural building envelope and roof is $185,000, which is significantly less than the other buildings. Likewise, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems of this building are much more simplified and less robust than the first two buildings. We do have a laundry list of upgrades for fire suppression, electrical power distribution, and HVAC, but combined, they are less than $200,000. The largest line item on this list is the non-compliant fire sprinklers, once again at $45,000, upgrading the fire suppression system. Electrical power distribution was less than $12,000, which is a good sign compared to like the community house, which was in order of magnitude higher than that. Site civil was estimated at less than $50,000, $47,000 related to accessibility ramps for sidewalks, access to the building, and building envelope. Or not building envelope around the building, accessible, accessibility before you get into the building. So that was much less than in the other cases. So for this building, you were definitely looking at less than a million dollars in recommended upgrades. Which makes sense at 6,000 square feet.
When's the last time this building was used?
About two years ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What was happening in there?
We discovered that we had some issues with the flooring, it was sagging and there was some structural integrity concerns, so we halted programming in there.
Oh, what, I didn't even know there was any programming.
Karate.
Oh, okay.
Quick follow-up, so, like, so when I add, so the necess, I see now the, the immediate stuff is like the stuff that you think absolutely needs to be done, that's like a million. If I added up all the numbers in this report, it's essentially like 2.8 million. So is the, everything else, the, the short-term, that's all just suggested? It's not required?
Yes, so it's not required, yeah, so basically, like, what do you need to get up to code and then what would you need to restore to essentially?
But to make it publicly available by our town, all the short-term stuff is still optional? Or do you make, by restore, do you mean we'd have to do it all?
I don't know if all, but several of them. Like, you, you may choose to go through and say, well, we're not gonna spend money on that slate roof, we're gonna put asphalt shankel roof on that.
I see.
Which, you know, which is like a value engineer that you could add.
So basically?
But like rewiring the building would be necessary.
Absolutely. So if, so, right, if you wanna do a perfect job, add it all up and it, I added these all up and it's almost 12 million for all three buildings. But it doesn't have to be, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's plenty of room to value engineer these things. If it helps, we can issue, we can rename the tables to like code required?
Sure, yeah, okay. Well, or you could just tell us, like, well, obviously the immediate stuff is without a doubt, unequivocally, we gotta do that, if it's gonna be. And then the short-term stuff is the real question, how much of that is discretionary? How much of that would the town need to do, if the town wanted to use it again, essentially, that's the question. What are the short-term things are required for that?
Would you need to versus?
Yeah.
Versus?
Need versus want, so.
Yeah.
Even the want seemed pretty important.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think if the town's gonna do this for any of these buildings, we want it to last 100 years, we want to do a good job, costs are going up. I mean, I think we should just assume everything on this list is probably worth doing. Do you think that's not correct?
Yeah, we could give, we could give another table that says opportunities for value engineer. Like, like an alternate, so we have, we have a cost for the slate roof, we can give a cost for like the architectural roof.
Well, the reality is not all three, the destiny of each of these buildings may be different.
That's, yeah.
And so the towns, the needs as much information as possible probably to make, to provide it to the public about how we decide, you know, what.
We can do that. Yeah, we, we can break them into those bins.
Yeah, I think you should just be guided by what would be necessary for the town to use this building?
Yeah, I can relay that to the architectural and MEP teams and we can reformat those tables to be more clear on those costs. Other questions on the buildings?
Because when I, when I look at, when I was reading these, I was thinking in the line of if, as Andrew alluded to a bit, if these aren't, if we're not taking this on, if we either sell the buildings or lease them out and somebody else does the work. They'll probably have it with a different goal in mind of revamping the use, but their, their costs would not necessarily follow ours. Are we talking a significant drop, you think, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
With, okay.
If you were a private contractor not paying prevailing wage, you could save 20% on that alone.
20%.
Not only that, but if you are in the business of doing these renovations with a history of doing so, without having to do a public bid, I would think that that would be more economically viable for someone to make use out of the existing building, save the building.
It is, I, really great locations for all three of these, really, and I, that's just what I'm with an eye towards is that, I, I wanna know how, trying to think how attractive it would be to a developer.
That would be the logical next step in the evaluation is what are we gonna do with these now that we know the costs, which, which I leave up to you. I would, I would say that all three of these buildings are very attractive architectural buildings that could find a suitable use. The question that I would ask of the town itself, what do you need them for? What are you gonna put there? And, and I, I would, I would have that drive where the investment goes.
Yeah.
What do you not have space for?
Well, that's the problem. The problem is we don't, we have buildings, but we, we're lucky, we have plenty of space, we have plenty of buildings, plenty of meeting spaces, plenty of auditoriums. So we don't really need, we don't have an immediate need. Now, there's a chance someday in the distant future, like the, the community house, the, the town hall would be very valuable to us decades from now, we don't know why right now. And I think there's a lot of opportunity cost in those years that we're wasting. And they're, they're basically abandoned or underused. So I, I think it's, you know, we've read the survey, some people watching might not have, but the survey makes very clear that there's not the same affinity for the old town hall across from CBS as there is for the community house. So I, I think it's very important to treat each of these buildings totally individually. And that's a building that is less attractive to a developer in the sense that, like, let's say professional offices, which is what was done at the Young Mansion. It's a very good use because it's very stable income and can self-sustain itself, you know, and a, a goal of many people is to preserve these buildings historically of the way they appear, which is good. But you, there's not a lot of rental space in the old town hall. And to be quite honest, it's hard to, you know, based on the square footage and putting in a million or 2 million dollars into it, that's going to be difficult for a developer to find that to be economically viable. So then the question becomes, what does the town sell it for? There are times, I'm sure you've seen, where towns give things away.
Yeah.
Because that's the only way it's economically viable. But what does the town get for it? The town gets a usable building and property taxes.
Taxes.
Indefinitely, right. So to be quite honest, I think that that is a very possible route for this building. The town hall, you know, we're struggling to find a purpose for the community house. So I think the town hall, frankly, we should as a town consider allowing proposals for professional offices. Because it's a, to me, it's a great, it's a great building for that. And I want Lynn to actually, Lynn and I have spoken a little bit about her obstacles to that. And I, I wanna just, you know, we, we should give you an opportunity to, to share that because we're just kind of starting the conversation now.
Sure. Do you want to hear from Dan first before you hear from me or?
Oh, sure. All right, well.
It's up to you.
Dan, what do you think? You mind hearing Lynn's answer?
Andy, can you answer? No, your hand raised.
I'm previously, but go ahead Lynn, I can ask my question after.
Sorry, Dan, I was looking that way.
So are you asking just specifically about town hall or all of it?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna give you an opportunity to talk about, so I, I, when the conversation has come up about could the town hall, which is on Williams Street, the one I'm talking about, be developed privately? Obviously, everything depends on a developer actually thinking it's viable and attractive. You, you've expressed some reservations about that because of the future needs of the town perhaps on the location that it's at.
Correct.
With the police station, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about that.
So town hall and community house share a lot, it, it's one parcel, right?
Correct.
So I, I would need to look at front engine and figure out whether you could carve that out or if we're not talking about us actually relinquishing ownership, we're just gonna do some lease arrangement, that would be a different story. My hesitation with wanting to, or with considering not having the town own and maintain it for the future is we just don't know what our needs would be, we don't have a lot of land to work with. And I do think whether it's us sitting here or the people that come after us, there are needs for police and fire. And at some point, we may wanna have a conversation about whether it makes sense to maintain two separate buildings or should we look at a public safety complex? And I'm not saying that now, we're doing something now, I don't want people to panic, but you know, in 10 or 15 or 20 years, if we don't have that parcel anymore, did we, you know, make a big mistake? So I think we need to both think short-term but also long-term at the same time.
And I've appreciated Lynn's perspective on that, but to follow on, my initial thoughts, I'm sure many share them, are if you're thinking about a future need for a police and fire complex, we, I think there's, I think we wanna make sure, to be honest, that we wanna preserve this building as it is. And I think some people who consider making a complex might actually believe that we might take the building down. And so that's one point to, that people may feel differently about. But, you know, if we make a complex of all buildings, you know, it's, that's kind of where that goes, I think. And, you know, cuz the current building isn't probably suitable for a lot of things that the police and the fire wouldn't want, obviously. A second thing. Police and fire. I lost my train of thought, but I'm sure it'll come back to me.
All right, Dan?
Dan?
Well, thank you. Appreciate the presentation, very, very thorough. One of, one of the, the questions that I just had, probably really for the select board, but I'll Um, one of, one of the, the questions that I just had, probably really for me, the select board, but also Lynn. Um, obviously, this, this is gonna be a huge issue in town. We're really starting to just kind of look at the results and then dig into things. And yet again, we have another price tag over ten million dollars, whether it's trees, infrastructure needs, roads, what have you, um, that we're dealing with, but I'm just, I just feel like this is such an important decision for the town that, that we are gonna wanna have a lot more public input. I know we talked about, we have agendas and people can show up, but the reality is folks don't. But I think this is, this is literally shaping our community in the future of what Long Meadow is going to look like and how we're gonna operate, um, you know, things in these buildings. So my, I thought was, I, I, I didn't know if anyone else was interested in maybe doing like a, a task force, like a building task force for this project to take a look at and get some public input or have forums on this because my fear is that we're going to make, you know, some decisions that people might be upset, others might appreciate it. But this is really a huge undertaking for the town and decision that we're gonna make. So I just wanted to kind of get everyone's thoughts on getting additional public input and then see what Lynn thinks about that, uh, as well.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think that's a logical next step. I remember now what I was gonna say, I'm sorry. Um, with regard to like the, if, with regard to the town owning it, which, uh, and maybe leasing it, the problem with, the benefit of that is the town owns it in case we someday wanna do something with it. The problem with that is the cost of the town renovating is much higher than a, just a private developer doing it. So there's a bit of an inefficiency there. And I wonder, you know, what I don't personally wanna see is that this, nothing happens for a decade. Because we're frozen or because we wanna keep it for a future town use, but we don't know what that is. I mean, in an, in a dire situation fifty years from now, if we really need the building, you could always, not that it's easy, do an eminent domain situation where you could just take it essentially. But right now, i- and if you wanted to make a fire and police department, you could add on to those buildings and, and make that complex in that significant space that's still between the buildings, for example. So I just wanted to throw those ideas back out there.
Yeah, um, just back, back to Dan's point, I, I think that that is something we can talk about, just right when we get to our next agenda point. But I, I think that that is absolutely the way to go. This is, uh, more brains the better on this, but also we, we got pretty good survey results here. And we know that there's, people are interested in this, which is good. Um, but I, I think that now we can get it a bit more concrete. Um, but while, while we have Mike here, why don't we move on to the, the, uh, final part of our presentation?
Yeah, I'll conclude the building property assessment by saying, I think, you know, you have the laundry list of, of items from an architect and a, a team of engineers on everything that's wrong. You may want to go in the direction of consulting with a developer or someone who is less on the engineering and architectural side and more on the economically viable side, right? So it might be an opportunity to like bring in another partner for your public engagement with, with what it could be, what it could be economically viable for, or what your options would be for municipal land leases or anything like that in the future. Cause now you've got your, your costs. Okay, uh, task two, we'll go through this one quicker. Uh, I wrote this report, uh, so I'm much more, um, familiar with all of the details on it. Uh, this task, we worked with, uh, Nick, the, uh, director of the facilities department. And the goal of this task was, we were, um, looking to compare how Long Meadow runs its facilities department to similar entities in Massachusetts. So what we did is we interviewed, um, three other towns and Bay Path University, um, as it is located here in Long Meadow and has a good reputation for their facilities. So we interviewed these facilities directors. We obtained as much as their budget information as we could to do a direct comparison with Long Meadow. So this was very much an exercise in benchmarking your practices, your organization, um, and, and the, the staffing and the budget levels, okay? So we talked to East Long Meadow, uh, for obvious geographic reasons, uh, very, very, um, similar makeup. Uh, we talked to Bruce Feeney. Uh, we talked to Danvers, um, Rob Dever is the director of operations there. We had access to a lot of their, um, uh, budget information. They gave us more than any other community in terms of like granular budget information. We talked to Bay Path, uh, University, Michael G. N. Pietro, apologies if I got that wrong. Uh, and finally, South Hadley Scottmore. So the challenge with this task was that, um, the data that we took in was highly varied. So first of all, there were plenty of holes in the data. The biggest example I can give you is when we would talk to a DPW facilities department, they would say, half the data you're looking for and all the access to, it's the school department. And we would try to go chase it for the school department and we didn't get a hundred percent of the data. Um, or, um, the participants were very gracious with their time. I wanna thank them, uh, for their interview time. Um, but we struggled to get information on specific things afterwards. So what we did is we took the information as a whole and we boiled it down to what we had common information for. We looked at practices, structure, staffing levels, and we tried to put some benchmarking in there. So that was, that was the extent of this study. Um, so a couple of key findings that, uh, me and the, and the team that worked on this found. On page two, table one is your summary of your buildings, um, and your staff. So things to take away. Long Meadow has a lot of square footage of buildings that you maintain, a lot. Um, Danvers is by far the biggest, uh, community in the study, um, and you are just behind them in total square footage. Um, one of the outliers in this data, uh, table was that you have two hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet of town buildings, non-school buildings. So compared to East Long Meadow, that's, they have seventy thousand. It's an order of magnitude larger. Same with South Hadley. South Hadley was the smallest community, um, in, in this project. Um, but again, they have like ninety-three thousand, um, square feet of town buildings where their school square footage um, was at least closer in line with your school's square footage. So you are maintaining a lot of square footage of town buildings. Um, if you look below the blue line, you'll see your staffing requirements. Your staffing, uh, was pretty in line is, is, is sort of the takeaway on staffing, is that the, the positions are there. Um, there are pockets of places that you're struggling to maintain or hire um, or keep people engaged for long periods of time. But in terms of the total numbers, um, that was, you were not an outlier. Okay? All right, so the next section is just a little bit about the Long Meadow Facilities Department, what they maintain, how much they maintain, how much staff they have. I don't need to go through that for, um, the audience, um, but it is basically describing your facilities department and how they operate. The, the section that that leads into is budgeting practices on page three. There's one highlight that I want to share with you, is that we found that the school department budget and the staffing are somewhat commingled with the facilities department. And I give some examples. At the end of the study, uh, the table was too big to embed in the text, is your facilities department budget. So if you wanna flip to the last page, there's a color-coded table. We simply took the line item annual budget, right? So the, the department's budget. And we looked at, is this a town building expense? Is this a school building expense? Or is this expense shared between town and school buildings? So you'll see that school building expenses are in blue, town building expenses are in yellow, and the split expenses are in green. So first of all, there are many line items that are going to both buckets. The majority is going to school, school buildings. So one of the takeaways from the budgeting practices is that you are not an outlier, keeping your custodians in the school department. That actually was the norm, that school custodians are part of the school, uh, department. In fact, it was only Danvers that had all staff, everyone maintaining schools or town building under DPW. They were the only ones that do it that way. But the other participants in the, in the study did a better job of putting those expenses into more defined buckets. These are the line items that it takes to maintain and keep the schools clean. These are the line items that it takes to maintain and keep the town buildings clean. There, there is some room for improvement there. I give an example on page four of what Danvers does, which is they have a subcode, right? So you have a line item code, a department code, and they have a subcode. And one is for town buildings and one is for schools. Um, and I think that has added great clarity to, you know, where, where's the money being spent? What, what are our major expenses? The next item is snow and ice budgets. Uh, why would that be included? Uh, because it is a major, um, it is the major factor that can kind of blow your budget, specifically, um, with facilities where there's a lot of labor involved. Um, typically, the majority of our respondents said that their snow and ice budget would live like in the street department. There were some respondents that said that each department had their own snow and ice budget. But one thing that was clear was weather-related snow and ice can kill your overtime. And it also has some significant mater- uh, materials expenses, so ice melt and things like that. One big takeaway that I did not expect to have in the report, that every respondent said, said that we're moving to level funding our snow and ice budget for budgeting reasons. Um, so if you level fund that line item, it is easier to take care of the wild swings. Uh, there were a lot of towns that were doing like five-year rolling averages that just said, we're just gonna level fund it. Um, for accounting reasons, um, what you're able to do at the end of the year for overruns, things like that. Um, another takeaway was getting the custodians involved. Um, several of the respondents, um, had the custodians come throughout the storm on overtime and clear walks and sideways, and sidewalks around the buildings, all the crosswalks around the buildings, make sure it was accessible for school to open. Um, not all respondents had that. It varied from, we take care of the doorway to we are part of the entire DPW snow removal team. Um, so we made some notes on, on roles and responsibilities. Stopping the questions, keep going.
All right, go.
Cool. All right, staffing and budget statistics. So we have a section where we threw a lot of tables at you. Uh, I promised Lynn that this would be a four-page memo with like eight tables that told the story, but the problem is we had so many holes in the data that ended up being a longer memo to describe best practices and then have a lot of smaller tables or else it would have been a giant table with a bunch of info missing. So in this section, uh, we start by talking about shift schedule. Uh, this was something that the facilities director, Nick, really wanted to look at in this, uh, study. Um, what we found is that almost all respondents run multiple shifts specifically for custodial staff. And many times specifically for school custodial staff. Every respondent had some sort of multiple shifts. Um, Long Meadow has multiple shifts. They are a little different than some of the other respondents. You have a middle shift, ten AM to six PM. So you have a first shift, seven AM to three. Second shift is three to eleven, and then you have a middle shift. So that wa- that is a good thing, that there was overwhelming response. Uh, table six, or table two on page six shows what each entity, uh, that we interviewed runs for shifts. Couple of takeaways. Second shift is key. It is much easier to clean and maintain a school building when there are no students in it. So second shift is key. Um, all respondents are, um, responded that way. Long Meadow has three floating custodians. This was also a theme in the respondents that we saw. Uh, custodians that move from building to building, taking care of issues. We identified that these three roving custodians are often, um, redirected to cover routine daily shifts because of vacancies. So you have roving custodians, but they're not being deployed effectively because they're covering for vacancies. And that is absolutely contributing to deferred maintenance and level of service. So if we're able to address those vacancies and get those floating custodians back to what the issues of the day are, um, we feel like that would have a high impact. Maintenance shift, or the maintenance workers currently do not have a second shift. And I should point out that that is common. None of, none of the other municipal entities that were interviewed had a second shift for maintenance. But one, one item that shown through very clearly in these interviews is that the maintenance staff in Long Meadow are not keeping up. They are overwhelmed. Um, and, and the deferred maintenance list is actually having a ripple effect on the capital plan. As machinery breaks down, doesn't live its full service life, um, or is constantly being repaired, that, that is having an effect on the capital budget.
Before you move on from shift, um, the, just to, a couple distinctions, um, the, um, second and third shift, that's only for the schools.
That's correct.
DPW does not, um, have multiple shifts for custodial. Um, and then the, the floating custodians, it's primarily for the schools. The DPW itself has four custodians, um, and I guess you could refer to them as floating, but really, they're just responsible for all the buildings.
Multiple bill, each, on the town side, they're each responsible for multiple buildings, which is similar but slightly different to, than the floating positions. Um, but we've made some recommendations in the shift section about reviewing the shift schedules. So, and we try to give examples and noteworthy practices from the other respondents. And so for example, um, you wanna have an early shift to open buildings before people get to work. You wanna check for problems. You wanna see if a pipe burst overnight or anything before people get to work. Um, Danvers just has one person do that instead of the whole shift coming in early because one theme that, that came out in the shifts is that for specifically town buildings, those custodians are starting early to open the buildings. But then they leave early. And a lot of times, they're being called back to take care of issues and they're being called back on overtime or on premium time. Um, so you could review your shifts and say, well, maybe we only need one custodian in early and push everybody back so we can reduce overtime. Um, or how many custodians are overlapping at the school during the day? Could some of those be shift more towards the night to work more effectively in teams when the building is empty? Okay, so on to the tables that I promised. Um, we did look at some benchmarking. So we found the National Center for Education Statistics, NCES, gives a guideline for how many custodians you should have per square foot in schools and things like that. They have levels of service. So the punchline is, is that schools should aim for a level three cleanliness level, which among other things says that you should have one custodian for every twenty-eight thousand to thirty-one thousand square feet of floor space, right? So that's the range to achieve level three. And you are in that range. So again, your, um, FDEs, your positions that you have available, does not seem to be the driving issue. It is more the vacancies that you are dealing with. Um, so that's what table three shows, is that you are at twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three square feet per custodian for schools, which is squarely in that range. And you can see how the other respondents, um, land in that range. I will say, some of them are slightly above the range, uh, but we think that's accounted for because they, as you'll see in a minute, we have some, some pretty good preventative maintenance practices that they're practicing. Also, um, this is for in-house staff and some of the other respondents are relying much hever- uh, much more heavily on contracted services. Um, we did the same thing for, uh, custodial staff for the town buildings, and I wanna point this out, that Long Meadow is an outlier. Um, so while that, um, NCES level three cleanliness is specific to schools, um, when compared to the other, uh, communities, the town building custodial staff is more than double what other square footages are being taken care of in other towns. So that's table four. You'll see that, um, town custodians in Long Meadow are responsible for over sixty-seven thousand square feet of building to clean. Whereas in some of the other communities, it's in the twenties and low thirty thousand. So you're, they're taking care of more than double the square footage of space for the staff that you have in-house. All right, more than halfway through. One big takeaway, one crystal clear takeaway, is hiring trades. Long Meadow is struggling to staff trades. What I'm talking about is carpenters, electricians, plumbers, things of that nature. There are vacancies in Long Meadow. We point them out, that we looked at the annual budget, um, where it stood in September. And for electrician HVAC salaries, it was like zero point zero spent. They're obviously vacant. You are not alone. Table five basically says that every single entity that we interviewed is struggling to staff these trades. We have given some suggestions. Part-time work. So there are a couple of towns that have advertised part-time positions for plumbers, electricians, HVAC technicians. So these are people that have a job in the private sector and can give you X amount of hours. hours per week. Another way to do that is through on-call service contracts. So you can put out a service contract that says, I'm gonna need access to an electrician ten hours a week, right? And we'll tell you which ten. Or you can have explicit contract services for, um, typical duties. So you shall be, um, responsible for maintaining the, the air conditioning chillers at the high school. Um, so different ways to do that. You can supplement with contract services, so you don't need to contract the whole thing out. You can look for, um, part-time, uh, managers or middle managers. So part-time head custodian that could oversee contract services or things like that. But specifically, you, sorry, you are not alone in struggling to hire tradespeople. And I would pivot. I wouldn't even try. I would either go part-time, contract services, but you are competing with private industry. And unless you can come up with creative benefits, they're gonna continue to remain vacant, and you're gonna use that, that salary wages line item on contract services anyway. That is shown in the two tables below. It's how much do you spend in contract services per square foot? And what percent of your budget is contract services? And you can see that Long Meadow is low. So you take pride in doing these things in-house. You've historically done these things in-house, and it shows in your budget that you are on the low end when compared to your peers on spending money on contract services. Moving on to page nine. Table eight, nine, and 10 are the same table. We have total square footage, just school buildings, and just town buildings. So this is basically, the facilities department is custodial plus maintenance. So those two things combined, what are you spending per square foot? You will notice that Long Meadow is on the, um, lower end. It's actually very much in line with East Long Meadow. Please note that each one of these tables does have asterisks with caveats that say, this is not included, so salaries and wages were not included, some salaries and wages were not available. Um, but what you're looking for is, is who is an outlier and how much money we are spending. So for example, Danvers, which has pivoted to contract services quite hard, is spending the same amount, um, that the university is, Bay Path University is, right? In the second table, you can see that Long Meadow is more in line with like what East Long Meadow is spending. All right, so moving on. We looked at overtime as an indicator for things like preventative maintenance and, and deferred maintenance kind of running into the capital budget issues. Um, what we found is that, um, you are pretty much in, in line with your peers on percent of the overall budget that you're spending on overtime. You're not an outlier. You're not spending incredible amounts of time on overtime. But what we did find was that East Long Meadow is an outlier. They are spending significantly less percent of their annual budget on overtime, and we asked them why. And we got a very robust answer from Bruce. It is their preventative maintenance program paying dividends. They have put an extraordinary amount of effort into their, um, CMMS, uh, their, their work order ticketing system by populating it with preventative maintenance activities and keeping a spreadsheet and empowering a lot of the people that are in these buildings, such as custodians, to do that work. Now, I should mention that Long Meadow custodians do a great job with, with, uh, taking on maintenance responsibilities, routine maintenance. So something that a homeowner would do, changing the filter on the air conditioning unit, right? Like something you might do in your home. Custodians are doing that, but what East, East Long Meadow has done is they've really taken it to another level, and they took great pride in showing us their systems and what they're tracking. And it is, it is clearly showing up in the numbers, because they're spending half of what everyone else is spending in overtime. So that is what the next section talked about. Uh, what are you using for a ticketing system? So the takeaway here is that pretty much nobody liked their CMMS system, their work order system. Uh, but you're using a popular one brightly, is, is what you have, and a lot of communities are using it. Um, and it, it seems to be, um, you know, a business that isn't gonna go out of business, that your peers are using, um, that you can get training on and plugins and updates to. So it seems to be a fine choice. Um, they are expensive, um, but the big takeaway that we got from many of these facility managers is you get into it, or you get out of it what you put into it. Um, and if you're embracing it as a tool, you'll get different results than if it is a burden to you, something you have to do. Okay, getting to the very end now, vacancies. You are very much in line with your peers struggling with vacancies. They are around twenty percent. Twenty percent is a lot. That is going to show up in your level of service. Why do you have vacancies? So we looked at salaries. So table fifteen is wage comparisons. The good news is, we were able to create sort of a master list of positions that you had. So we used your, uh, union contracts to get the salaries, um, and took everybody else's union contracts, and we tried to make it a range because there are steps and ranges in these union positions. The good news is there's a tight correlation. There really weren't a ton of outliers. It was, it was very cohesive in, in what these pay rates were. The bad news is that Long Meadow was on the low end for almost every category for begin, for beginning salary. So, so for each range, there's, you know, the bottom of the range and the top of the range. And you are low on the bottom of the range, pretty much across the board. And that's, and that's what table fifteen is showing. Um, so notable takeaways here. Um, one thing we noticed is that school and town custodians are in different, um, unions, and they have different pay rates. So you might be competing with yourself on vacancies there. So if I was a custodian in one system and there was an opening in, in town buildings, say, why wouldn't I just move there and, and make slightly more money per hour? So that could be cleaned up. Uh, we already talked about the low end being low. Um, longevity amplifiers. So we heard from a couple of participants that they have increased ranges. So they've added a top range. So if you top out at range seventeen, they added a range eighteen, and they have increased the numbers of steps between each range. Almost every participant had a longevity multiplier. So if you've been with a town ten years, you get an extra five hundred bucks. You know, fifteen years, you get an extra thousand bucks. Um, these are all, uh, under the category of creative fringe benefits. Um, it is hard to raise salaries because you get into an arms race with the, the towns around you. So, um, one suggestion is adjust often, right? I think we're moving into an inflation environment that is not going to relent. And so I think you just need to adjust and keep pace. You don't need to outpace because the community next to you is just gonna raise it, but you can't fall behind. And I think one thing that is analogous to the, um, presentation at the beginning of the meeting is, if you adjust these rates often, it's better. The best example of a creative fringe benefit was clearly from Bay Path. If you work for Bay Path, your children can go there tuition-free. Now, I know that Long Meadow can't offer that, but you really should think about what you can offer. And I don't have what those answers are. I think they should come from within, but creative fringe benefits, you know, maybe it's a thirty-five hour work week instead of a forty-hour work week, or, um, you know, you've got a lot of beautiful pools in town. Maybe the families have access to the pools. I don't know what they are, but you'll need them if you want to keep these in-house. Um, the last recommendation on this section for staffing is, take a very hard look at what is important to you to keep in-house and what you can use contract services for, even if that means adding more middle managers or, or supervisors in a part-time role to essentially micromanage those contract services. It might be a more effective way to get rid of these vacancies. I think the vacancies are a problem for all of these municipalities. And it, I don't see that getting better without more creative thinking. So we ended the memo with six numbered recommendations. To briefly, uh, go over them, um, there is improvements that could be made to the budgeting process to make it specific, to see where you are spending that money and where you are underfunded. Or at least the demarcation line between school and town buildings, um, to separate those level of services. Consider a level funded, comprehensive, and unified snow and ice budget. Uh, review the shift schedules is a big one. Um, second shift is very important in reviewing that middle shift and, and, and early shifts. Clearly understaffed at the custodial level on town buildings in terms of square footages, that could be an opportunity for contract services. It was mentioned to us several times that there have been negative, negative experiences with contract services in the past. I would encourage you to reach out to some of these participants, to ask them how they are managing it. A lot of them are adding shift supervisors or foremen, um, to essentially be like a team captain for contract services. Pivot away from in-house trade work, or consider part-time, um, or on-call contracts. Develop a comprehensive preventative maintenance program. You have a lot of square footage here to maintain. It is a lot of mechanical equipment to maintain, and, um, taking the most professional approach you possibly could to standardizing some of these, um, standardized operating procedures, some might call it in DPW world, uh, to get the most out of this equipment is going to add up fast. It is not easy. It is not an easy undertaking, but it pays dividends for, for a long time. And thinking about fringe benefits, what absolutely has to stay in-house, and how you could structure con, contracts to get what you want out of your contract services. I would recommend multi-year contracts that have escalators in them with options to renew or not renew, because another thing is you don't want procurement to hold you back as well, right? So you should really consider multi-year contracts with, um, either escalators or options to renew. I know that was a lot. I know I've been sitting at this table for a long time. We just went through three buildings and an entire department. If you have specific questions that you can remember, I'm happy to answer that. Thank you for entertaining the explanation of my work here.
Thank you very much. I get, it was really my, this is pretty granular for us, um, but I, I wonder if the town would wanna speak on what, how this is going to be incorporated into staffing, if, uh, I'm sure Nick is aware of this and, and Sean. So can you tell us how, uh, we are, how we're using this?
So, um, full disclosure, we, we just got it, um, like, what, two days ago, maybe, roughly?
Friday.
Late last week, yeah.
You got it Friday.
So Sean and I haven't connected yet. I will say that, uh, I think a lot of this was kind of validating to what they've been experiencing, um, but it was eye-opening to me to see the square footage comparison. Um, that, that number is staggering. And then the other thing, I, I had to read it a few times because the numbers can be a little deceiving because we're co-mingling schools in it. And the school custodians are entirely separate. They're in their own union, they fall under the school budget, they do not ever set foot in a town building for any sort of custodial. And they are predominantly just inside their building at, um, at their school location. So, um, there was a lot of really interesting tidbits to take out of here. And so I need to get time with Sean and Nick and figure out what, what does this mean for us, and what changes can we make sooner than later, and, um, what are more long-term? And the, um, the work order system and the preventative maintenance stuff, I know they have done some of that work, but we're nowhere near what we should be for that software, and, uh, we need to come up with a plan on how to get there.
Yeah, to add to that, you know, we, we had, um, South Hadley, East Long Meadow, Danvers, Bay Path University. We would go through these points one by one, and four out of the five would say, we're struggling with the same things. We are trying, we are trying to get this done. And one would have a solution. So that's kind of why we did the notable takeaways in each section, is we were just trying to take the best idea from each of the, each respondent for each category.
Um, I can say, one bit of good news is that we did, we have been trying to hire trades and be a little bit more creative with that, and we just hired an electrician, twenty hours a week, benefits, um, starting in the new year. So that was one positive, but we still have vacancies in plumbing and HVAC.
How much of our two-hundred-seventy-thousand square feet of building are the three we discussed today?
Oh, the town buildings?
Yeah.
Good question.
I know six is the old town hall. I don't remember the other two numbers.
Community house is twenty-four thousand square feet. So it'd probably ballpark like forty thousand? Thirty-five thousand?
And so.
I can email you that.
Town hall is also six thou, oh, I know that, it's in our head. I mean, it's.
Town hall's six thousand?
A little under forty thousand.
Town hall's six thousand?
Well, it says six thousand livable space.
So it's in the low thirties. Cause community house is twenty-four thousand, if town hall is six, that's thirty, and then the other one's a little bit more, so low thirties. So it's a little, it's more than ten percent of the town's square footage.
What is the rest?
The adult center, this building?
DPW.
It's eleven percent, yeah.
DPW, adult center, stores, library, this building, um, the old DPW grounds, I'm, I'm assuming it's anything with a roof, right?
Pump stations.
Pump stations, sewer treatment plant.
I'm just trying to think how East Long Meadow has so little.
We have more buildings.
I guess, yeah, clearly.
Yeah, you have seventeen municipal facilities, seven major town buildings, six schools, all park buildings, including camps, pool houses, concession stands.
Does East Long Meadow have a pool? Like a community pool?
No. I have no idea. I don't know. Uh, but I do know that they, a lot of their offices have always been consolidated. They done, they weren't, you know, parceled out through multiple buildings. It's.
Well, now they're in, up on North Main.
Yeah, but even before that, you know, where, where they were.
Yeah, the buildings are physically separated, they're on opposite ends of town.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be easy to send a janitor from here to DPW.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, well, this, very eye-opening. Um, this is why we do these things, so, yeah.
Sorry it was long.
No, that's okay. That's, uh, that's a good, good thing.
Just to clarify, it's about forty thousand square feet, cause the town hall is ninety-five-hundred square feet, not six thousand.
Oh, okay.
And then. Old town hall is much smaller, I think. Okay, so it's closer to like forty. Substantial.
All right, anybody else from the rest of the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I appreciate your time. Um, and we can, um, issue the property condition reports revised, um, for the more specific buckets.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, why don't we move on to our survey results? Uh, Lynn, would you like to present this?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna kick that over to our Mike, um, who ran point on that for me.
Two Mikes in a row.
Yeah.
Hey, if you don't mind just pulling up that presentation. Um, so at the same time that Thussin O'Neil was working on assessing the general building improvement needs for these facilities, the Town Logic Community Input Survey for informational purposes only. Survey was opened from June first through July seventeenth with a primary purpose of receiving feedback, um, to guide planning efforts and ensure spaces met the needs of the community. We received nearly eight hundred responses on the survey, and around four hundred and seventy-five participants actually signed up to be notified as the study of the facilities progresses.
Um, Mike, I, I did this, and I don't remember how I got to it. How would, how did you put this out there?
Oh, yeah, so this was launched on social media. The link was directly to our, uh, link tree, so you were able to easily access the link, um, right from either Instagram or Facebook. It was on the homepage, it was put out in the town manager's newsletter, which reach, reaches probably about two thousand people, three thousand people.
It's just, it's such a great, uh, amount of people. And we're very happy to see it, and it, and compared to some of our other surveys, it blows them out of the water.
Yeah, I agree. We've, we've done, I think, two or three surveys in the last two years. One was for the turf study, which we got a tremendous, um, feedback on, as well as this one. And I, there was one other that we also got off the top of my head, I can't remember. We got good feedback on.
The middle school, we didn't get good feedback on, and there was another one that I can't remember that we really struggled to get.
It may have been municipal aggregation.
Yeah, there was another one, I, I don't know.
The open space and rec plan has never gotten a good, no. But the active rec study did get pretty good amount.
That's what it was. Active rec was about the same turf study, active rec, and the building use all received pretty good feedback. So with that, with the four hundred and seventy-five participants that signed up to be notified, our plan is to create an email list to follow up with interested participants and plan to build out a webpage to host. and plan to build out a webpage to host this presentation from Mike Nelson tonight, as well as the results in a summarized form from this presentation here. So first off, I'll just generally summarize the results. Next slide, Peggy. The familiarity with the buildings, about 80, roughly 86% of survey participants were familiar with all three buildings. Most people obviously familiar with Community House and Town Hall and less familiar with Old Town Hall. A lot of people in the generic responses we got at the end indicated that they didn't even know Old Town Hall existed. I can go to the next slide, please. For types of uses, for the vacated Town Hall, 20 William Street, the results indicated that an arts and cultural settle, center, educational workshops or classes, a restaurant or cafe, space for recreational programs were the most desired. People also considered coworking business space as well as a community meeting space as the next tier of options. Next slide, please. For Old Town Hall, similar options, but a restaurant or cafe was one of the top choices as well as an art center, space for recreational programs. And one option that wasn't considered for the vacant Town Hall was a historical archive center. For the Community House, recreational programs, art center, you can go to the next slide, sorry. Recreational programs, art center and space for community meetings were at the top of the selections. People were also interested in specific programs related to senior or youth, seniors or youth. But you did not see the option of a restaurant or cafe come through for the Community House, which we can touch on later. So for important factors to consider, according to the survey, the most important factors were preserving historical features, creating new tax revenue for the town, a space to serve a broad range of residents, as was discussed earlier, the cost to renovate or maintain, yeah, the cost to renovate or maintain the buildings as is, and a community gathering or recreational space. People value the idea of creating new businesses, but are less concerned about accessibility and environmental sustainability, which are important as we know from Mike's presentation. In terms of importance of the town continuing to own and operate the facilities, for 20 William Street, the margin was close with the preference of town ownership only slightly edging out the option of town not owning. But on the other hand, for Old Town Hall, 417 Long Meadow Street, participants were more receptive to the town not owning the facility. As indicated before, a lot did not even know what that building was or the intent of that building. And then for the Community House, 735 Long Meadow Street, there was an overwhelming number of survey participants who expressed the importance of the town continuing to own and operate this facility far more than the other options. And as we move into owning or operating, yeah, open to private, open to private ownership or development. More participants were open to private development of Old Town Hall and the vacated Town Hall and less of the Community House, which is no surprise. And that's what the results yielded in the ownership question. But most people stated they are in favor of private ownership to generate new property taxes for the town or private development to bring more businesses to the community. They were also still open to the town maintaining ownership, but indicated that if the costs were too high to renovate, they would be open to private development or ownership. So if the costs were too high to maintain, a lot of people said, we understand that. Let's move forward and figure out what private development looks like. You can go to the next slide. So then to generally summarize some of the additional thoughts that people gave, we received just under 200 unique responses detailing ideas for the future. That's that little section at the bottom of the server where you can say, would you like to know more? Do you have any other feedback? Many resident, residents emphasized the importance of preserving the historical integrity and charm of the buildings. They advocated for continued town ownership and opposed privatization or demolition, especially for the Community House. For, for the remainder of the buildings, including Community House, numerous responses suggest using the buildings for community-focused activities such as youth centers, teen nights, programming, dance and theater spaces and public gathering spots would be desired. Several of the comments proposed options for generating revenue, including private development for retail cafes, restaurants, professional offices or housing, especially senior or affordable housing, or through long-term leases while the town retains ownership. Other residents suggested highlighting the need to increase the town's tax base and view private development as a means to achieve this. While others expressed concern about the financial burden of renovations if the town maintains ownership. And lastly, there's a recognized need for necessary improvements, including ADA compliance, modernizing the interiors and addressing the parking challenges as Mike suggested to earlier as well. And I pretty much covered most of the stuff in the analyzing the results section when we went through the slides. But just to summarize generally, most people were familiar with all three buildings, less with Old Town Hall. They stress the importance of the town continuing to own and operate certain facilities and others, there was not a strong preference for. And then some of the most important factors to consider again were preserving the historical features, creating new tax revenue and serving a broad range of residents. And of course, the cost to rehab, renovate or maintain the facilities. So just want to say thank you to everyone who participated because as we discussed at the beginning, very good response rate. And we're not used to seeing that. So you have to kind of take that and run with it a little bit. So.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I thought this was, the, the survey was well done and I, I wouldn't say it was, kind of got along with the thoughts that I already had. And so I wasn't surprised by any of the results, which is good because now we can put a number on it and know just how people are feeling. I think a lot of them, if you're know or don't care on whether we own or operate a building, I would kind of lump that together. And really, even if, if you do that, people really don't want, people want Community House to stay in the town. And that's, and I get that. It's central. It's a community hub. It's in the name. And then the other two buildings, you know, I, I venture a lot of people may have popped into the Old Town Hall once or twice and never got farther than Clerk's Office. And I went upstairs once and it was, and I was in that building a decent amount and I wouldn't go back up there necessarily. But yeah, so I don't think people have a strong attachment to that. It's a beautiful building, but it's not a building I think that is important to us. And I, and I'm glad you, Andrew and Lynn brought up future considerations. But we, we just had a, this all, obviously, we put this together intentionally, but we know that we have buildings that are, need a lot of work. We know that we have problem staffing. And we know that we have buildings that we don't necessarily need or have a good use for. So I guess my first question is what, what is the carrying cost for these three buildings? If we could estimate that?
I'd have to get back to you with that.
Yeah, I think that that's an important, I imagine it's not an incredible amount, but it's not nothing. And the, the income that the Community House is bringing in is not, is not great. And it could be, we could house that somewhere else. It would, people would not like if we moved elections, certainly. But it's tough to have a building just for that in the book sale. But you know, if we can keep that building and find a way to offset the cost for that with our other buildings by offloading them or finding private developers leasing them out, I think that's something we should think about very strongly. And think about what we, what we value and what we cherish and how we can keep that. And not hold on to things just because we have them. Anybody else?
I'll say that I agree with what Dan said probably about an hour ago now, that it feels like a task force is what we need here. I mean, this feels very much like our conversation at the beginning when we were talking about municipal fiber. There are, I mean, I have a million questions and there are a million threshold questions that need to be answered and so much that needs to be looked into. And I think the task force, somebody like a group that is dedicated to this and can work on this and look into all these different issues and questions is what we need because we are not going to be able to do that as a select board during select board time. You know, I also think that this task force should be charged with not only looking at these three buildings that we discussed tonight, but also with Glenbrook, also with our property and Academy Road. I think it's time for us to be assessing these, you know, properties and figuring out what we can't do with them. And like Lynn said, the police station is, I feel like that's something that's hanging there. That's a big concern for me because that police station does not fit the needs of a police force in 2025. And it is something that we are going to have to reckon with eventually. And this would be a great time to be considering that as well while we're looking at all these different buildings. And then one, you know, one other thing that we did when we decided to move town offices to Greenwood was we did get some correspondence, people reaching out to us from the building committee and other groups asking whether we would ever consider, you know, being here temporarily, but then moving town offices back to that area of town permanently. And I think that we owe an answer to that. We owe our residents an answer to that. And that's something that we should look into and we should, we should have an analysis and, and a, and you know, and, and answer for that. Because I think we, that's something that we told our residents we would look into and we should, we should answer that. And then, you know, there, there are just like so many different things here where, you know, I would like to know whether we put a restaurant in Old Town Hall versus a store or something else, like what is the revenue projection for the town? You know, all those different things are, you know, need to be looked at. And so I hope like the task force for municipal fiber that we can get a group of folks in town that are experts in it that can start working on this quickly and have, you know, bring a good amount of knowledge to it. But I also hope like the task force that this task force could work quickly and that this is not something that is going to last forever, that there is a identified goal and that there's a timeframe and it's something that, you know, they can complete like in a year or so. But to do that, I do think that we should, you know, start this process. I think we should be sending out applications. We should be interviewing folks and we should get moving on this.
My only question on that is, and I totally agree, but I wonder if we want Glenbrook as part of that? Or is Glenbrook?
As a task force?
Yeah, a separate task force. Because that is to me such a massive undertaking and potentially transformative thing in the town, do we want that all together? And maybe, you know, if we're asking people to volunteer, maybe it's a lot to ask two groups of people to volunteer. So maybe it is, maybe those are the best. If we get the best of the best, we want them on both, maybe. So it's just a question.
That's a good question. I can see, I can see that there's, I'm trying to think of the, the Venn diagrams of these two proj, of these two basic projects and they are different.
They are, yeah.
And I think that it can be.
Versus.
Right. And you don't want to be over, you want to get a good answer with dedicated thought and effort for both. And I can see there could be value in having two separate task forces. And there could be the same people on both. I know it would be a lot of time. But I, I can see how they're different enough that to get the best answer for the town might require dividing it.
Well, maybe they're not that different because one of the questions is, is Glenbrook doesn't need to be knocked down. Could we reuse the space? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that is, I think the, they are different. I think we could do different task forces for each one. And then it would kind of be up to us to make sure that we're kind of coordinating.
At the same.
Whatever they, you know, recommend or decide or whatever, that we're the ones that, you know, eventually say, okay, doing that with Glenbrook makes sense with what you guys are proposing to do with over here.
I do, I see that it does make it a little more complicated.
Overcome, but you, you could probably have one committee, but have like a subcommittee, one that focuses on Glenbrook. Cause then you're at least getting that kind of strategic overview of, of like the building versus the land use together within one committee. Kind of removes us from that, right, removes us from that, linking it together. Whereas that committee could actually, that could be part of their task. You could just break the committee into two, like to two subsections. One that focuses on these here and one that focuses on the school and Academy Drive, because those are kind of linked to.
Yeah, I can see the benefit of that as well. I mean, we definitely want to move as quickly as possible on both of these.
Yeah.
Lynn, what do you think? If you.
So I think that they are, it's distinctly different projects. The Glenbrook parcel is 20 acres. It's open space and a building. So I, I wouldn't want to throw so much at a volunteer committee that it's too much and they can't get enough traction. But that being said, I think we start slow with the three buildings, just not slow, but maybe smaller. The three buildings, see what comes of that. And then you could always extend their, their term and, and give them Glenbrook. Or, or we could decide, you know, maybe there's a different approach to take. I just don't think we have enough information on Glenbrook yet. Like we, we don't have, to some extent, we have some of it from the Colliers reports that have been done, but I just, I don't know that we're able to move as quick with the Glenbrook as we would be with these three, meaning like a deep dive into what do we do next?
I, I, I agree with that, but Andrew and I were talking about this the other day. That could, we don't want Glenbrook to sneak up on us.
Right.
Yeah, and so.
Yep. I'm not ready to like give you a ton of information about this, but I did do an outreach to all the managers in Massachusetts who have had town or school buildings be repurposed or go through a process. And so I got a lot of great feedback. Haven't had a chance to kind of combine it all to give you something back, but it was primarily for the Glenbrook parcel, not so much for these other three buildings.
I think that you made a good point. Like literally the Glenbrook, nothing, we want to, it's a lot of work. We're going to move on that. But we're literally can't do anything with it until the, the, the new middle school is built. For these three buildings, we're literally every month that goes by, there's opportunity cost of property taxes of community not being able to use and enjoy these buildings. So maybe getting right on doing a task force for these three buildings. And yeah, like if it's going well, then maybe, and it seems to work out that they can be, take on the task of Glenbrook like in a year after we've gotten some of the logistics done with like the school committee relinquishing it, then that makes sense. And maybe if it doesn't make sense, then we just create a new task force then.
Did you hear that, Mike? Yeah, I was just gonna say that we should be hearing back also from the Attorney General's Office on the Capitol Planning and Building Committee as well. And my assumption would be is they would also either make recommendations or play a pretty heavy role working alongside the task force potentially, once that's reformed. And you'll be interviewing people for that as well. So if they're not considered for, for the task force, they may want to consider, this is a plug, I guess, for some of the vacancies that we may have.
Yeah, and I also think that sometimes some of these questions can be answered just by who applies. And once we take a look at how many people apply, what kind of expertise they bring, it might make sense to do, you know, one big group with subcommittees or to say, okay, let's start off small with the three buildings and then, you know, transition over to Glenbrook. You know, I mean, I think even with the, I remember with the fiber task force, I think originally we had only wanted, you know, five folks or something on the task force. But then nine people applied. They were all really qualified and then we decided, okay, let's do nine, you know? And so, yeah, so some of that, it might just be answered by who applies and shows interest.
Right, okay. So unless we have anything else, I, I would say if you can come back to us with a, we'll have a future agenda item and make a listing for what we're looking for. And do we, do we have a, a task force makeup that we've had that would be, you could use for guidance, you think here?
I think we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll bring you back a recommendation. It could be as early as your next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause Andrew's right. Time, time is money on this, on these. Okay. All right, if nothing else on that, we'll move on to Lynn's very brief town manager report.
I had already announced that we had success in hiring an electrician. So we're very excited about that. Long Meadow Street, south end resurfacing, Palmer paving was the low bidder on that. This is from Crescent to the Connecticut line. Bid came in at 921,000 and we had been planning on using 1.2 million in chapter 90 funds to cover that work. So it's great that it came in lower. That work's going to kick off in the spring. Municipal aggregation, that was covered during announcements, so I don't need to repeat that again, but this was regarding new accounts. Coal vest site and design for the Redfern Williams parcel. The planning board held a meeting in November. They have another meeting scheduled for December 3rd. So for those people that are interested in seeing how that progress is going, you know, definitely tune into those planning board meetings. There's a lot of really interesting conversation about it. And then last week, I attended the Fire Academy Legislature Day along with select board member Shelley Maynard DeWolfe. It was a really interesting morning. We were there with Fire Chief Rigney. It was the first time the event was held in Western Mass. It's usually in Stowe. We had an opportunity to go through different demo sessions on equipment and apparatus and fire demonstrations. And then they also talked about some pending legislation for removal of PFAS. And then they also talked about some pending legislation for removal of PFAS from turnout gear and other things that may have a financial impact on the town in the future. And then just an update on the status of the recycling barrel swapouts. The, if you recall, in October, we had set the deadline for October 17th for people to make their final choice on recycling cart size. With that, an additional 147, 146 carts were requested during that time from early October to October 17th. And so now with those final numbers, it did double the amount of carts needing to be purchased. To purchase the carts and the lids, it's a total of $22,572. There's a waiting period of six to eight weeks for those to come in. And the DPW has started to reach out to residents whose cart is currently in stock. And that's, the whole process though is going to take several weeks before we can say we're fully implemented. That concludes my report.
Well, are you getting any feedback from Waste Management on the recycling carts, or since they've switched to the automated?
Yeah, Lisa's the one that directly interfaces with them. I do know that they had both been working together on leafletting when things were not right, to try to educate residents to make sure they were putting it with the bar facing out, not having things overflowing. They were not picking up extra boxes on the side of stuff. But if there's something specific, I can bring it back and ask her.
Well, I, I, somebody told me that their bins are ending up way down the street or on the other side of the street, which I, I don't know what.
I did see, I did hear that feedback too, that some, some streets are, their bins are getting put back on the other side of the street, so they're lined up on one side of the street versus not being put at the end of their-
It doesn't seem like that would help anything.
I don't even know how that would happen, but I did, I did see that and was told that.
And the thing, what I was wondering about, I, I know that if anybody should know how these were going to work, it was us, but I was surprised to know we had to put them three feet apart. And, but I, I was looking out my window one morning and I saw there was somebody walking ahead of the truck pulling them farther out. And I, and mine, because I know they have to be apart, so I've been doing that, but I don't know, are we not doing it enough?
I can ask.
So yeah, that's, because that seems like an inefficiency to have somebody walking ahead.
Yeah, they may be training new drivers. There could be a lot of reasons for it, so I'll find out.
Yeah, you're not so great at grasping, you just say, let's make it a little easier for you, and when you get better.
Maybe, I don't know. There's, that's a whole world I don't know a lot about, so happy to bring it back.
Yeah, just pass that on, because if there's anything that people need to know, and that's what the leafletting is for, but if there's any bigger communications that need to be done.
Yep.
Lynn, one question about the, the recycling. Are we still having a problem with the cardboard and the, the filling as fast as we were and maybe potential just non-residents using it?
I haven't had a report on that in a couple of weeks, so I will check on that as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Beatty.
The Long Meadow Street, South End resurfacing, glad to hear that the bid came in lower than we were projecting. I know that this section of Long Meadow Street is on the, you know, it's on the schedule for a tip, for tip money. Is this also, are we, I mean, are we doing a skim coat patch here on the South End? Similar to what we did between Will Meadow and Bliss, because that's also on the tip project list?
Yeah, I can get the, the right terminology, but it's not, obviously not full in-depth reconstruction, but it may be more than just a skim coat.
Okay.
So I'll find out. It might be mill and overlay, but I'll, I'll find out.
Okay. And then I, so I'd asked this question earlier about when we did this over the summer and we did kind of like a skim coat over, you know, on, between Will Meadow and Bliss, and that's actually part of the Long Meadow Phase One project, so I'd asked why we were doing this when we were getting state money for it, you know, the next couple of years. And the answer was, was that this, these roads had been, were in such bad condition that they were deteriorated so bad that they were basically damaging our snowplows. And there was, you know, danger for us to even go one more winter with the roads in that condition. And so this is just going to be a kind of like a Band-Aid on there until we get the state money to actually reconstruct the road.
Finally, we're a little late on monthly reports, Lynn.
Yeah, there's actually a few people that were out of the office over the last week or so, so we'll post them to the next agenda.
Thank you. Just showing them paying attention.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else for the town manager or on the monthly reports?
No.
All right, moving on to correspondence, we have covered that pretty extensively. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, we have November 3rd.
Can I just, I'm sorry, just on the correspondence, I just wanted to address that a couple of the residents did make, mention that they had not received a response back. So I did speak with some of them and clarified that they sent directly to the Select Board email, which is the one that shows up only on Select Board. So we'll work internally in the office about putting something on the website that says if you use this email address, it'll show up at Select Board meeting. You might not get an immediate response, that type of thing, just so people don't think it didn't go anywhere.
That's a good idea, because it always is an extra, when it gets forwarded to us, it's, we don't know if somebody's already responded, and it's, it takes a couple of extra steps.
So we'll work on cleaning that up.
That's a good idea, okay.
And some of them did clarify that, that some of it was to our depart, the town department that they hadn't got it back to, so.
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lynn. All right, moving on to old business, November 3rd, 2025 meeting minutes.
All right, I move to approve the November 3rd, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, anything further? Anything, all those in favor, roll. Roll call, Peggy?
I'm sorry?
Roll call, please.
Josh?
Yes.
Beneath?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Shelley?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to mobile food vendors on town property policy. Mike?
Yeah, so this came up, I believe in August we first discussed it, maybe actually, no, maybe it was September. I might be thinking of the track policy. We took this back. There weren't a lot of suggested amendments that we had to make to this. We just kind of clarified some of the sections for mobile food vendors, the difference between mobile food and beverage. That's all under the mobile food vendor as defined in the Board of Health regulation. So food and beverage, we can retitle it as food and beverage, but it all falls into mobile food vendor, whether it's a cart, booth, a truck, and so on. We did receive some good feedback, actually, last week on the Barnard parcel, the Bar Call turnoff, which was one of the areas of question. Public Safety, Town Engineer, Fire mostly did not have an issue with that site if there was no active construction staging in that area. There's going to be some gas work, some paving work going on where it's likely that parcel is going to be used for storing some construction equipment, as well as if there were, if this became a popular site and there were multiple trucks, multiple carts, which I don't believe is, are intended at this time, I think it's just regulating kind of locations and figuring out how, how to have something put, put on paper so that we have kind of more, a more grasp on what's going on. So with that said, traffic concerns with if there was parking limitations in there, if somebody actually needed to pull off for emergency reasons to make a U-turn for public safety. There may be some concerns with that area for that. With that said, I made the suggestion of doing it on an as-needed basis, whereas they would have to request permission, or not request permission, but get an outlook of current projects from Public Safety to see if there is a timeframe in which they would be able to use it. It's, it seems like the Barnard parcel over the next year might not be applicable because of the active construction zone that it's going to be in, so.
Did we approve, what, Soco Coffee Roasters?
We said contingent upon this recommendation right here that we're giving. They haven't operated out of it yet.
I don't think they have, I haven't seen them anywhere yet.
They've been at, I think, either the park or Wolf Swamp, one of the, I think so. But with that said, we should just probably maybe take that out of the policy for now and then add it, or make it clear that the person would need to coordinate with Public Safety prior to their event to make sure that there's no
Yeah.
traffic or construction issues. I think that's probably the best.
Yeah, because we're, we're getting to the end of outdoor vending season, so that's something we should definitely keep in mind.
Yep. But I do, just to add one more thing, I do think this is timely, because we have received two more requests that could possibly come forward in the spring, so. Yeah, so I do think it's really good to have something.
That's why you put a policy out there.
Yep.
So I, my questions were less, I, I think that this is, I think this is good, and I worked in what we talked about last time. My, like any policy, I think we have to see how it works in practice before, to see if there's any holes in it. But one of the things I noticed, the sign, and I, I go to poor things a lot, they have a sign that they normally put up by the street. Is that, is that in their permit now?
No, technically that's not allowed, and that's against the bylaw, so that has been reported to code enforcement in the past. And I think they've, may have had conversations with them in the past.
So, but we can, we can authorize that?
Yes, as a special, under your objects on the tree belt policy, you can authorize that. When they have events, they're authorized to put those signs up.
So I think, my takeaway for that and like the umbrellas and tables and chairs, for people who are applying, they should take a very close look at this and be very specific in what they want. Because there's a lot of things that say you can't have it unless we say so. So make sure you're asking for what you want. And maybe when, I don't know if our permit now says, have you reviewed the bylaws, but.
It, it references all of the applicable bylaws and then they-
Oh, sorry, the policy. We should say, have you reviewed our policy?
Yeah, that's a good point.
I don't, I think I brought this, oh, sorry, Mike.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I think I brought this, brought this up last time, but I think 3.2, I, I still think needs to be reworded, because to me it sounds like, you know, a mobile food vendor is, if we allow it, then they, you know, can operate at all of these different places, and I think it needs to be reworded to get rid of the shall, and maybe say something like, you know, the Select Board may approve mobile food vendors to operate at the following locations or other locations as requested by the mobile food vendor. Because if I looked at this, I would say, okay, then, these are definitely all the places that I can operate.
Upon, you, you still want it to be upon request of those locations?
I think you said instead of maybe shall, may, or I think you're saying, Joe, it doesn't just lock them into all of those, right?
Right.
Right, that's what I'm, I think that's what I'm trying to say, so that when they apply for their annual permit, they're specifically marking down which locations they want.
Didn't we decide that they, these are the only places in town we would give permits for?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think we don't need it unless, so.
Well, I mean, like at Soco, we didn't, we didn't approve them for all of these places.
No, that's what I'm saying. So these are the only thing you could do, so.
Right.
Instead of, rather than unless specifically approved by the Select Board, it would be mobile food vendors may only operate the following locations and, and as permitted by the Select Board.
Yeah, something like that, yep.
Okay, that's serious.
Or may only apply for even, because it's, yeah, like you said, we don't want anybody thinking, I have a permit, I can do what, any of these places.
Yeah. Yeah, but besides what you said about the signs and the tables, that was the only other thing that stuck out to me. I think everything else looked great.
Actually, I think we might need to reword this completely, that section. Because right now, the way I still read it is, if you apply for it, you, these are the blanket locations.
Yeah.
So I think we need to make it clear that when you submit an application for a permit, you have to specify which applications, which locations that you are looking to operate out of, and then the Select Board can decide whether or not to grant that or to give them additional locations.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can rework that one, I think.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. Well, if we're still working on it, I guess we don't need to vote on it tonight, and nobody else is applying until the spring, so. Why don't we just have this come up one more time with that change?
Thank you.
All right, anybody else on that before we move on? Or move on to the traffic and roads policy?
I can touch on that one as well. So we met as a group with the Traffic and Roads Advisory Group last week or the week prior, talked about some of the amendments that first came forward to the Select Board a few months back. One of the changes was the implementation of the Complete Streets bylaw, which we've had since 2017 for the prioritization plan, since has been updated in either 2023 or 2024. So there is now a disclaimer in the policy that acknowledges the Complete Streets bylaw. And you could also link directly to the prioritization, prioritization plan as well. Additionally, we have now added a section where it says, upon review of an application or on its own, Trag has a discretion to deploy the following measures without input from the Select Board, with the exception of projects listed on the Complete Streets prioritization plan. So we just added that with the exception of the projects listed on the Complete Streets prioritization plan. And then lastly, we added a section for active construction, which is highlighted in blue. And the construction zone is defined as an area on the public right of way where construction, repair, maintenance, or survey work is actively being performed by authorized personnel or contractors. And this is pretty much saying that traffic calming applications in areas currently undergoing road construction will be temporarily halted until road construction is complete, so that we can reengage this scenario and see what other mitigation factors may be applicable. Those are the only changes that we're requesting.
I don't object to the referencing the Complete Streets bylaw, I just, this is a policy, and that doesn't read as part of the policy, I guess, but it is important to reference it because it comes up later. But I don't know, this comes back to when we first started working on the, on this policy. How much of it, do we want it to be prescriptions versus kind of laying out the philosophy? And I don't really have a problem with it. But, so, that's all I'll say about that, but I think that adding the active construction is a good idea. Because, you know, like Converse Street already, you can't get, you can't petition Trag for it anyway. But a street like that, that is having active use, like Western Avenue, it's good to cut it off now. If we have issues later, we can talk about it, but not while in active construction. I think that's a good idea. And I will just give a, applaud it to the, to Trag. This might have predated Trag, but the, since the, the speed signs have gone on Ellington and Farmington, I do think they have made a difference. And it's, it's interesting that a little thing like that can affect the way people, affect the way they act. And so, you know, this is, it's something that's, that's what Trag's for, and if people want to interact with this, I think it's, it can do good things for your neighborhood. Anybody else? All right, Ian just can't wait to go.
He's been waiting a long time.
Has Jim been waiting? Is he on? Oh, boy. All right, well, we'll move on to the real estate tax abatement.
Do you, do you want me to make any amendments to this one?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, do we, we can vote on it, I forgot, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to vote on the updated traffic and roads amended policy?
So moved.
Second.
All right, anything further? Seeing nothing, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll?
Josh?
Yes.
Beneath?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, we don't pay you enough to go through this, but. All right, so this was, we changed this last year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so Jim, please go ahead and present.
Yes, I provided the 2026 Real Estate Tax Abatement Program for everybody to review, and there's really no changes from last year. We have 30 participants coming up for 2026. That will be the, the, up to a mouth, there wouldn't be any that would exceed the 30. And, you know, we're getting the applications ready after tonight. We'll have them ready for the public shortly after, and then we'll, we will start.
We're getting him his camera access.
There we go.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Jim.
No, no problem. Did you hear any of that?
We did, thank you.
I heard there's, yeah, up to 30 volunteers, I think, or you're preparing the paperwork, okay.
And, yeah, I mean, the program has been very successful over the past year. This year, in 2025, we had 28 total people, 20 seniors, eight veterans, and the impact and the importance of these roles continues to grow. We have a lot of volunteers. We have a lot of volunteers that help out in the adult center, we have other volunteers that are helping out in other departments such as the library, veterans department, town manager's office, town clerk, so the impact throughout the community for the volunteers to help out in certain areas continues to be a big program. And people look forward to participating here, we have some of our core members at the adult center that have reapplied year after year for this program to get the rebate, so we think it's a win-win for everybody involved.
All right, thanks, Jim, yeah, this is a fantastic program, and so you're just about at capacity, are you turning away any seniors?
Uh, we, no, we haven't turned anybody away, the only time we turn people away is if they reach out to us after we've already selected the volunteer to the year, we've already had people play, sometimes that can happen like a couple of months after the fact, if they hear about the program, then unfortunately we have to reapply after the following year. But usually we get around the same amount of people, depending, you know, a little bit more at times, but it's usually right around that thirty range. A little bit higher, a little bit less sometimes, but, you know, we've gotten a lot of great support from town departments over the years, which has made the placements a lot easier going forward.
Okay, that's great. Anybody want to speak on this before we vote, beneath?
Yeah, thanks, Jim, would it help for us to increase the cap of thirty?
I think thirty's the perfect number right now, we've increased it over the years, it was at twenty, then I think went to twenty-five, I think thirty's the sweet spot right now.
Okay, great, yeah, and then I just, I did notice, I think, a typo under the first section eligibility. Just the third line, it says, I think the comma's in the wrong place for the amount for veterans. So I don't know if we can just edit that, so.
The comma's in the right place, there's extra zero.
Oh, it's extra zero, yeah, either way. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so if we just edit that.
New lawyers, I tell you. You gonna send a bill to me?
I might bill us for how long he's been waiting. All right, all right, if there's seen nothing else, we have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-six real estate tax abatement program?
If I can just ask for the board to specify the amount and indicate what earnings are going to be received by both senior and veterans. The reason I ask for this specifically is it's part of our overlay, and the assessor will need the amounts in order to estimate what our overlay hit will be with these veterans and seniors, thank you.
Sounds like a beneath job.
Jeez, all right, wait, so what did you need, you needed, so two thousand for seniors, fifteen hundred for veterans, and then what else? Yes.
Is that it?
Do you need that, or, or do you need a breakdown?
I, I would need the total, so that's two thousand and the the seven, the eighteen seventy-five and the fifteen hundred, I would need you to tell me how many of each, and then the amounts. If I could have that in the minutes, we can specify the overlay hit.
Sorry, so do you mean?
So if you go down here.
So in section five, underneath senior volunteer and veteran volunteer, it specifies the total taxable earnings per participant. And I would need to, you to tell me how many participants for each, and then the approved amount for both, so the twenty thirty-eight sixty-two for seniors and the sixteen thirty ninety for veterans.
Sixteen thirty ninety for veterans, okay.
Do you, you need them broken into specific buckets?
Yes, because the reason, the reason we need them broken into specific buckets is if we have a veteran who can apply as a senior, that is a larger hit to the overlay versus the opposite.
So with, so are you, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, so within the thirty spots, do we have to say like twenty are for seniors, ten are for veterans?
It's helpful if that is specified within the minutes.
Okay.
It's something that we've done prior to this year, we did not do it this year, and it creates a little kerfuffle with the abatements. So I just want to make sure that's specified.
Okay.
Okay, and so Jim, you did say there were twenty seniors and eight veterans this last time around, right?
That's under four.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, so it's, so doing twenty seniors, ten veterans, sounds good.
That's reasonable, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we spoke to Ian about this, and we have some flexibility in the language, if there was, it went high in each category, I think as long as it balances out budget-wise for Ian, then the twenty and ten number makes, makes sense all around.
Okay, great, thank you, all right, so I will, I will make a motion to approve the Senior Veteran Volunteer Services Program, the Volunteer Abatement Program Guidelines and Application with seniors being set at two thousand dollars, veterans being set at fifteen hundred dollars, with twenty spots for seniors, ten spots for veterans, and you also need me to add the tax, don't you?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Anything further, seeing nothing?
Second.
I beat you, Dan, sorry.
Josh?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Beneath?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes, thank you, I apologize to the confusion.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Okay, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, Ian, your time to shine.
All right.
Five-year financial.
All right, do you want to pull it up, Peggy, I'll kind of just touch over it real quick while you do that, so.
Everyone's fresh and well-rested.
Well, I do, I do wonder, I mean, I hate to say it, you've been here the whole time, but we, we have a lot coming up on our agenda, but I wonder if we want to table this until we are listening fresh.
That's totally, that's totally fine, I'm, if you want to table.
You don't feel like you wasted your entire evening?
No, I mean, I, I totally understand, like.
I mean, we couldn't have made the last motion without Ian here.
Right, strike wise, huh?
I, I just, you know, this isn't a very.
It's an important conversation.
It is, yeah, and I, I don't want to give a short shrift, and I know you put a lot of work into it, and I'd rather us not, you know, I might, you know, my eyes are spinning right now, so if, if you're, if you don't mind.
I don't mind, if I could ask, though, if you guys have specific questions, as you've gone through the report that you have for me, if you could give them to me, that would be awesome. That way I can kind of add them into the discussion when we next meet, that would be super helpful.
Just one real quick question that I was gonna ask you about was, when you're looking at debt service, if we could get the breakdown of what debt service is tied to enterprise?
Sure.
Versus not enterprise, I think that'd be really helpful.
I can do that, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was something that the board would want to see, or if they want to see it as a whole, so I'm happy to break that.
I mean, for me, I, I feel like at least enterprise funds, that's a whole different beast, so.
Just so you guys know, I had spoken to Ian earlier today about, and suggested, at least commenting, if not making a slide for future upcoming borrowing in the next five years that we can anticipate, and how that might affect
Yeah.
the debt service and stuff like that, so.
So our next meeting is the joint meeting, the budget kickoff meeting.
Six o'clock starts?
Yeah, so we start with the budget kickoff with the school committee and select, and finance committee.
Is that an argument to do it then or not do it then, or do it now?
No, I'm just putting it on your radar, I mean.
We are starting at six, so that gives us really four hours to meet.
I'm, I'm okay to listen to this if it's, if the next meeting is too long, is that what you're?
No, 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 I think that fits in well.
Oh, it's good, okay, fine.
I think it will loop into the budget kickoff, so.
And it saves Ian from presenting to finance committee on his own.
Twice, yeah, okay.
All right, so it made it, it'll make it worth it that he came here. So just knock out the finance.
I honestly don't think we've ever tabled something, can we, how do we, do we need a motion? It's a pleasure of the board.
You just continue, yeah, continue discussion.
We're gonna table this to the next meeting, sorry, thank you very much.
No, that's fine. Sorry. It's, hey, I, I appreciate your focus, I appreciate. I appreciate your focus, so, you know, this is something I'm happy to wait on.
Yeah, I know you, you have put a lot of work into it, and so definitely want to make sure that we are giving it our full attention.
Yeah.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have to say anything, I have to say anything else, no, no, all right, go ahead, yes.
Josh?
Uh, yes.
Beneath?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.